Thank you. Good evening. This regular meeting of the Board of Education for December 11th, 2018 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. For tonight's meeting, any law that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. As a reminder, we now have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin, Judy, wherever there you are, attending all regular Board meetings. Specifically, Judy will be here to listen to the public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 or ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening, and I'd like them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language they will be interpreting, and inform the audience where they will be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance.
Здравствуйте, меня зовут Жанна, я переводчик с русского на русский язык. Если кому-то понадобится мой сервис, я здесь для вас. Спасибо.
Благоночи, ми номе сандрес, сой интерпретер сертификадо эн еспаньол. Войестра хасин эн интерпретаций симультанес. Синитя интерпретацийон, пурфавор, ванга паракатрас.
He's highly skilled.
Дага хо, май кон чуман га, омэн кио элви. Иго сео ю чуман фо мо, фаньи фо мо, га тен тау хо бин ван го.
Той ла чук фу ньвент, тэ ти ком ти том дзет Passports and Languages. Той се го бин го, куи а бин киа, хан тю бе, вэ нэу нью фу вин няо ко нью кэу дзюб дэ ве гон гэ, ти вит и тин ган, ти дам эр чо той би, син кэп мэн.
Thank you. Okay, Board members, are there any items on our business agenda that you have questions on? This does not include those individual action items listed on tonight's agenda. So any items for discussion will take place during the business agenda portion of the meeting. Any items?
No.
Okay. Then, Guadalupe. Move on. All right.
This is normally the part where I excuse staff, but I would really like senior staff to listen to all of our community who's out here this evening.
Okay, great. And to inform the public that our Chair Rita Moore is away this week, and so Julia Sparza Brown, Vice Chair, will be chairing the meeting tonight. So Ms. Hewson, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
Yes, we have both.
Great.
And we'll start with student comment. Angela Jimenez and Ajuné Stewart.
Okay, thank you. And as they make their way to the table, I would like to review our guidelines for public comment. The Board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to the Board. We value public input as it does inform our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a Board is to actively listen without distraction from our electronic devices or papers. Okay. Our next two speakers, Maya Lizette and Zoe Riddell. As a reminder, Board members and the Superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment. If you want to follow up with the Board Manager, please contact Ms. Hewson or Roseanne Powell, our Board Manager. Roseanne, where are you? Behind you. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees shall be directed to the Superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items that you would like to provide to us or the Superintendent, we ask that you give them to Ms. Hewson to distribute to the Board and Superintendent. Presenters, we'll have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear, and when you have one minute remaining, a yellow light, and when your time is up, the red light will go on, and we respectfully ask you to conclude at that time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maya Delatorre Mackin, and I'm a senior at Jefferson High School. So today, I would just like to address the IGA for the SRO agreement, and I would like to bring up that while the SRO agreement states that students have been provided an opportunity for input, that effort has not been adequate. My fellow classmates and I have not even heard of this proposal till this past Thursday. Many of us are very concerned and would like the opportunity to share these concerns with the Board. Because of such short notice of this meeting tonight in particular, many students were unable to attend and have their voices heard. Within the past day, I have received thirteen letters from students who were unable to attend but who wanted to provide their input. I believe in order to ensure that you have full understanding of the impact of this decision, you need to take more time to listen to the students directly impacted and make a greater effort to let students know what is going on. I really hope tonight that you choose to respect the needs and the wants of your students and choose to delay the vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Jensen Sears and Eliana Machua.
Hi, my name is Jensen Sears, and I'm also a senior at Jefferson High School.
Spell your last name, please.
S-E-A-R-S. Before the vote, you will hear Student Representatives Sarah Steele and Isabel Mace McClatchy read a statement. This statement is a product of seniors at Jefferson High School coming together to ensure that our voice is heard in this conversation. While this wasn't every student, we did our best to make sure that everyone's opinion and voice was heard through meetings, surveys, and petitions. This issue of SROs in our school directly affects us, the students of PPS, more than anyone else. We would like to acknowledge that the group of students from Jefferson that are speaking tonight does not accurately represent the demographics at our school. We believe that our message is representative, however, as it is based in many hours of conversation, drafting, and social media outreach. We would like to thank the teachers, parents, and other adults that assisted us in this process and who want our voice to be heard as well. These adults recognize that this issue needs student voices behind this decision. While listening to our statement, we hope you realize how important student voices are and why, especially on this agreement, which will ensure the presence of armed police officers in schools. You need to include students in the conversation and ultimately in the decision. We know that there is a student representative on the school board, however, this is only one person from one school. We also recognize and appreciate the Portland Police Bureau and members of the Board coming to talk to Jefferson High School last week. However, four days is simply not enough time to digest this properly and have our voices heard with enough consideration that our perspectives will not be pushed aside but actually engaged with and listened to. Right now, the students of PPS are putting the ability for our voices to be heard in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eliana Machuka, and I teach at Jefferson High School. I've been listening to students throughout this week, voice their concerns, and I definitely I support them in that ask to the Board to delay the process so that they can, there can be more student voice, not only in this decision but in all decisions. As I've been listening, one of the things that has been surfacing just for me as a teacher is the reliance on, from the SRO and from school board representatives, the strength that they believe that this program brings, which is restorative justice training that the SROs will be bringing in as an asset. I do, however, feel kind of frustrated in that because I think that teachers and staff and students are the best ones to actually do that kind of work in schools. And I know that last year I tried to get a restorative justice training, the one that I was able to go was canceled, and then moving into this year, it seems like there was three opportunities last year, and that only went to one opportunity this year for training, and I believe that there are like maybe three centralized staff, SRO, I mean, sorry, restorative justice trained administrators, however, like these people actually need to be in our schools. So I think a better investment for the money that is coming with this agreement might actually be in trying to figure out how we can better equip our school communities to do some of the work. And I think that in having these further conversations and engaging student voice, I think some of these things will surface, because if we're trying to get to student safety, I think there's a lot of ways we can get to it before we start bringing in armed police officers.
Thank you. Next, we have Nathaniel Edmonds and Maura Gabriel.
My name's Nathaniel Edmonds, E-D-M-U-N-D-S, and I teach at Alliance High School. According to the version of Resolution 5160 that's on the PPS website, the Edspeksen Master Plan for Benson Campus should include the seventeen hundred student common areas at Benson Campus and classrooms for thirteen fifty, and Alliance Professional Technical High School common areas and classrooms for five hundred. That's, that reads to me as a master plan for twenty-two hundred students. Now, I welcome the latest initiatives to reach out to our community and hear from our school community, but I have to advocate that if you want to stand with students facing adversity and tell them that they do matter, that their circumstances or their disability or their upbringing has not disqualified them from the promise of a free and appropriate public education, then you, you do it the other way around from the sequence of events that's described in the resolution draft in front of you. You vote next week to include Alliance High School as a community of five hundred students as was originally voted on in Resolution 5160, and then do the research to see if a better opportunity for us opens up a better location by March, and vote accordingly if that manifests. Alliance has to be accessible from anywhere in the city and from all walks of life. They should have common spaces, private spaces for collaboration or retreat, spaces at times to grieve, to play, to listen, to be heard, appropriate restroom access, our own entrance, and a garden. This is doable, and I know that because there are members of the Benson community that believe it's right. Because I was approached after making comments at the October meeting of the DAG by a Benson teacher, and he said, "I had never thought about it from your point of view. Your students have as much of a right to be here as anyone." Thank you for speaking up. There are students and leaders in the DAG who know that these questions matter, not just to their communities but to the legacy that Benson would then represent. So it's time to build new schools, sure, but we must also build those bridges in our schools, in our communities, in our hearts, in our homes, maybe in this country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Guerrero, members of the Board, my name's Maura Gabriel, last famous G-A-B, R-I-E-L. I'm a PPS parent of two children for eleven years. I'm here to share the PPS experience of an asynchronous child, identified as both highly gifted and with what is termed specific learning disability, he's dyslexic. He has speech and OT as part of the early childhood program, then testing showed HG in kindergarten, but reading and writing were clearly an issue. We began asking if he was dyslexic in first grade and every year after through sixth grade, and learned later that PPS specifically avoids the term and offers no services for dyslexic students. So despite an IEP since second grade and a lot of advocacy, he completed sixth grade years behind in reading and writing to the point in struggling in all areas, including his areas of giftedness and devastating his esteem. Avoiding the term means his dyslexia was not addressed until after sixth grade, when somebody outside of PPS made it clear that he was dyslexic and needed specific instruction. And fortunately for him, we are able to provide that. We did have to pull him out of PPS this year, though, to have his needs met, after many failed attempts, meeting with SPED and Five Oh Four teams to accommodate his needs at Access at Lane. But he's, you know, he's one kid. This is not really about him because he's getting help. What about the other one in five children, which for PPS means roughly ten thousand children are dyslexic, and they're not getting services? And it's great that we now have screening for kindergarten and for some first grade students, but what do we have planned to do once we screen? And what do we have planned to do for the children who were already identified? And more importantly, what are we doing for the kids who can't afford the tutoring that you need to be able to move forward? These are bright-eyed children who become jaded. These have a higher incidence of dropping out. They leave school with a diploma, but they are not functional readers, and this is a true disservice that PPS does. Many of these students are also creatives. They're gifted in lots of ways, and they benefit from less traditional environments, so it's especially upsetting to hear that Benson could be closing. And I know we say it's not closing, but it's a little disingenuous if it turns into a two-year skill program, it's closing. So I have a few asks. Recognize inadequate help for dyslexia as the equity issue it is because that's what it is. Don't close the one high school that already actively works for kids who learn differently. Actively pursue opportunities working with families, with teachers who know about structured literacy. Hire more teachers with structured literacy, and if you can't find them, then fight the schools that are turning out these teachers and say, "We need teachers with structured literacy." The budget's already strained, and it strains even more when you have to try to provide remediation for the fact that the universities aren't turning out teachers who know about dyslexia for twenty percent of the population. They deserve free and appropriate education. It's time to provide it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael McCord and Susan Bartley.
Hi, my name is Michael McCord. McCord spelled M-C-C-O-R-D, and I'm here to testify my opposition to the relocation of Alliance at Benson High School. Alliance at Benson High School is located blocks away from the Lloyd Center, in about fifteen-minute walk from Rose Garden, Moda Center, whatever you call it. And what that means, that it's a hub in the city of Portland, which makes it so people from all over the city can access that building. And if it is relocated, many students who didn't succeed at their traditional high school or whatever, they're going to be lost, and they're not going to have anywhere to go, because a lot of these people have a lot of barriers, including private transportation, which is how many students get to school every day. So if you take away the high school located where everything is accessible, many kids will not succeed. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Susan Anglada Bartley, that's S-U-S-A-N-A-N-G-L-A-D-A-B-A-R-T-L-E-Y. I want to start by letting you know that there shall be no personal attacks this evening, nor shall I venture into topics that I much prefer to be dealt with discreetly, though I encourage you to act expediently so as to avoid my return to this very chair to discuss a different topic. I'm here as a parent to discuss the inequities that exist between Bridger and other comparable schools. However, I want to make it explicitly clear that I do not support moving part of the school to Marshall. The majority of the Bridger community does not support the move for many reasons that you will see clearly communicated in documentation that was provided to the Superintendent. When Board Member Julia Brim Edwards came to Bridger recently, she made a statement in which she mentioned other inequities. At that time, she said that if community members wanted to see those addressed, we should come and speak with the Board. While I do not understand how an elected official can see inequity with her own eyes, make a public statement about it in front of the community, and still not take action to solve it, I'm here because our children deserve a middle school and elementary school experience comparable to that of other schools. While researching the inequities, I stumbled upon a picture of Brim Edwards and Governor Kate Brown on the cover of the Mount Tabor website. A few questions came to mind. How is the picture itself a testimony to the nexus of power and privilege that is keeping schools with high numbers of students of color and students living in poverty in a state of devastation while schools in wealthy neighborhoods receive additional connections, resources, and course offerings? How does the picture illustrate exactly why Nike must pay their fair share of taxes? Because when politicians are guided by corporate interests rather than the voices of the people, they will overlook children who are suffering right in the foothills of their backyards. Have you ever gathered the patience required to hold space for a young person who has suffered great trauma and also struggles with hunger? Have you ever heard the beating on the walls? Have you felt the demand? I'm here to remind you that if you want a strong society, you must feed the children well physically, spiritually, emotionally, wholly. I'm here to ask you what it does to children when we take away art, music, movement, and access to mental health in their formative years. Violence, illness, incarceration. I'm here to let you know that we are facing child hunger. We are facing a distinct need for a bilingual social worker or mental health professional. We are in need of more FTE provided at a time when our awesome principal can make her own choices. We are in need of books, materials, and opportunities comparable to other schools. I'm here to ask you as a Board to consider the needs of the community and add to the overall budget for both this school year and throughout the next three years while we move through the process of discovering the future of the programs. No more child sacrifice, no more putting profit, power, and privilege before people. The time is now. Finally, can you look into the high-poverty schools and schools that serve Black, Latino, and Native American students in this district and ask yourself, "Have we done right by this community?" And then, when you find that the answer is no, I ask you to listen to the voices of the mothers and grandmothers in these communities and give them exactly what they need. They will tell you, "Counselors, not cops." Follow me if you hear me. Counselors, not cops! Counselors, not cops! Counselors, not cops! Nike, pay your fair share. Thank you.
And lastly, we have Yolanda Cabrera.
Since there wasn't a first person in the first lot, could I get that spot? Because I walked in a couple minutes late, and she said she can't add me.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's another place I can be.
Yeah, there were a lot of other people, and now it's getting confusing as to, you know, who would have been first in the list, so sorry. Thank you.
If I go, I'm a parent.
Sorry, it's not our procedure. Thank you. So next.
I want to talk like these kids do. I have kids here. I like to talk.
I understand. There are many ways of emailing us, sending us. Thank you. Okay, next is Superintendent Guerrero. Would you like to provide your report? As I said, there are so many people that are on the list at this point. We don't know, you know, who was waiting, so we're not adding.
Does anybody, I would like to see. No one else is coming up. I'll be very quick, I promise.
All right. Woo! [applause] Sorry about that. My name is Elizabeth Sullivan. I'm a parent of two children in PPS. The first time I heard of SROs, I received an email from PPS Communications on Friday, September 21st, so it was a Friday, at 3:03 PM, and the subject was "School Security Upgrades to Be Installed." And it was this long email rattling off all the security installations, which will include video intercom, system override buttons, voice-over internet phone, PA systems, which I think should be a general maintenance question. I mean, PA, every school should have a PA. I don't know. Goes on and on. New signage should direct visitors. Where do they go? That really is basic maintenance, too, but this is all part of this long email that was sent on a Friday to parents. And many people don't read emails on Friday at three o'clock. And that was the last email I heard from you guys about the SRO. So I would love to have contacted you sooner, but I didn't know this meeting, like the student just referred to, I didn't know it was happening. And I'm somebody who's in tune with everything, or I thought. So that was all the things. It was just kind of glossing over that, you know, they're going to do this, but I had a lot of questions in this email, and I asked other parents, and they hadn't even read the email. It said, "Based on an overall evaluation of security capability done by a security consultant." Well, who is that security consultant? What are their criteria? Where do they come from? How much do we pay them? Do they have future RFPs? Do they have future work, you know, like where do they come up with these ideas? And also, it was based on, you guys said, "National Best Practice Recommendations." What are those recommendations? Just like, you know, my middle schooler, you got to cite your references. So I don't know what you're, how did you come up with this? You know, like there's nothing. So then we go back in time, and we look at, okay, so the bond was proposed in 2017, and if you look at the bond, and anybody can look this up, it's the 2017 Health, Safety, and Modernization Bond. On February 28th, 2017, it lists how we were going to divide up one hundred and fifty million of additional health and safety projects. So it lists, number one, water quality, lead-based paint, asbestos, radon, fire alarm, roofs, ADA accessibilities, and last is security systems for five million dollars. And it says funding up to eleven schools, whereas the water quality is funding up to ninety schools. So it's like it's last in this priority, and that's what we all voted on, right? So cut to May 17th, 2018, we all voted sixty-six percent to pass this bond for our kids, right? Seven hundred and ninety million dollars, the largest bond in Oregon's history. Then we find out, oh, no, no, then you guys did your budget, right? So in June 2018, and it was all about safety and well-being of our students, but that essentially was...
Okay, thank you. You've got your minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'll send you all the, who should send information to?
You can reach us on the, look at the Board website.
All I want to say lastly is please don't vote tonight. You guys aren't ready.
Thank you.
Just admit it, you're not ready.
Thank you again for your comments. Okay, next, we're turning it to Superintendent Guerrero. Would you like to provide your report for us tonight?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Directors, and to all our viewers and all the audience that's present. We really do have some truly remarkable educators here at PPS. Last Monday, I had the opportunity to be present, as one of them was recognized with the Milken Educator Award, often referred to as sort of the Oscars of education. That person was Janet Doe, who teaches first-grade students at Whitman Elementary and the only teacher in the state of Oregon who was recognized with this prestigious award. So congratulations, Janet. So among the many reasons why we believe she was selected was really her ability to keep learning, engaging, and fun for our youngest students while covering critical topics that her students need to advance in their education. I wanted to recognize Janet, who represents and exemplifies all those teachers who every day go the extra mile for their students, who think creatively about their lessons while making meaningful connections each day with our students. You can find a short video clip of the student assembly that was held at Whitman last week on our district homepage, but congratulations once again to Janet Doe. Reimagining PPS together, this past weekend, almost a hundred invited stakeholders, made up of students, parents, educators, community leaders, and our Board of Directors, participated in the launch of our visioning process. Folks spent both Friday evening and all day Saturday beginning to talk about and imagine an aspirational future of our school system. We had an opportunity to hear from a panel of futurists here in the boardroom on Friday who helped provoke us to think about how we might best prepare our students for a future world. I want to thank all the members of the Guiding Coalition for their active participation in what will be a months-long process, and to let everyone know there will be opportunities for community engagement, and a more detailed schedule will be published right after the winter break. And speaking of planning for the future, the district senior leadership team has started early and begun initial steps to develop a proposed budget development process for school year 1920. As we continue to think about our shared priorities, especially those that involve racial equity issues, as outlined in themes emerging in the Board and Administration's Shared Work Plan, senior leaders are giving very careful thought to forecasting what kind and level of strategic investments will be necessary to achieve our goals and impact on student achievement in equitable ways. We anticipate budget planning will be informed by our visioning process and in emerging outline of a strategic plan for the school system. Our intention is to share a month-by-month budget development and community engagement process with the broader public after we have an opportunity to work with the Board of Directors to define this process. Of course, we're all monitoring the overall fiscal outlook for public school districts in the state of Oregon, and we are pleased that the Governor has prioritized K-12 education in her recommended budget, but I know that we will all be monitoring and advocating for investments in K-12 as the legislature embarks on its process. Yesterday evening, many of our directors were present, along with other local school board members from surrounding school districts, to meet with local elected officials to begin sharing shared areas and priorities, as was expressed to... As was expressed to senators and representatives from the region, they appreciated hearing our thoughts on a range of important areas that will help hopefully to inform their advocacy and process in the legislature. Oregon School Activities Association Awards. In the spirit of looking through things, through the experience of our students, here's a shout-out to some of our Scholar-Athletes. I'm happy to report that the Cleveland Girls Soccer Team was at the top of the list of the Academic All-Star Awards, which is presented by On Point Credit Union. With a combined GPA of 3.9, they led all girls soccer teams in Oregon, and it's the second year in a row that the team has won this honor. Congratulations, Cleveland Girls Soccer Team. But they were only part of a very strong showing by PIL. Wilson Girls Soccer was runner-up. Wilson and Franklin Boys Soccer were number one and two in their category with a 3.65 GPA. Wilson Volleyball was at the top of their category with a 3.84 GPA, as was the Franklin Boys Cross Country with a 3.94. So congratulations to all our Scholar-Athletes for achieving high marks both on and off the field. I recently attended the Da Vinci Arts Fair and was very impressed both with the level of talent from our students and local artists as they showcased at this popular and annual showcase. We have some stunning examples of visual and performing arts going on almost every day around the district. You can find wonderful examples of both student and staff art regularly displayed here at the central office, which we greatly appreciate, and I hope that folks are getting the opportunity to enjoy some of the numerous school performances and concerts this winter season in PPS. Under the leadership of Kristen Brason, our Program Administrator for Visual and Performing Arts, schools have put together dozens of shows and classes, ranging from the Creston Winter Sing-Along and Multicultural Night, which is happening two nights from now, to tomorrow evening's Winter Symphonic Band and Wind Ensemble Concert at Lincoln. There are many more events. You can find a full list on our district's Facebook page, but just to give you a little flavor, here's a short video from Grant Asia, Grant High School's main winter arts event.
...performing arts extravaganza! Are you ready? Oh, yeah! Hallelujah! When I walk in, I'm singing hallelujah. I'm singing hallelujah. I'm singing hallelujah. Noel, Noel, yes, who makes this song sing at the table? Noel, Noel, yes, who makes this song sing at the table?
You're a mean one, Mr. Rich. You really are a hero. You're as cuddly as a cactus. You're as charming as a leaf, Mr. Rich. You're a bad boy, but always a lovable, rich black dude.
(music)
this season, and to our arts educators. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the Portland Public Schools Portland Police Bureau Memorandum of Understanding. So the Board has held both a public work session in October and also substantial discussion at a recent Board meeting on the PPS Portland Police Bureau Intergovernmental Agreement. We've also had, as you know, several student forums over the past two weeks on the topic. Notes were taken from each of the forums, and these notes have been shared with all of the Board members. I would like to ask Chief of Staff Stephanie Soden to provide any additional comments. Hello? And we have also our Captain Hager from PBB. Thank you.
So, good evening, Board of Directors, Superintendent. I do have Captain Tasha Hager with me. She's Captain on the Youth Services Division of the Portland Police Bureau, and I also want to point out that we have Assistant Chief Ryan Lee in the audience here supporting us today. So, you're correct, this is the third public discussion about the proposed IGA with the Portland Police Bureau regarding the School Resource Officer Program. We had a work session on October 9th and on November 27th, and then you have your final meeting today. So I just want to bring us back why we are asking you to approve an IGA. So, what many people don't realize, I think, is that we have been, we've had SROs, School Resource Officers, operating in our schools, providing safety and security services to our school communities for more than 20 years, but without a written agreement. And what today's IGA before you outlines is clarifying roles and responsibilities and defining who pays, what duties are, and it basically formalizes what's been in operation for over 20 years. So through this agreement, in addition, the Police Bureau guarantees that nine SROs would be fully dedicated to each of the nine high school clusters. So there are a lot of questions about what a School Resource Officer is, and Captain Hager can obviously tell you more eloquently than I, but what's outlined in the IGA includes the following expectations: that the number-one priority is to provide safety and security; as you heard two weeks ago, SROs are specially trained in restorative justice and trauma-informed practices; your high school principals will tell you that they are relied upon to de-escalate incidences; and SROs are specially trained to seek alternatives to referring students to the juvenile justice system by working closely with school-based staff and providers of wraparound services. What school resource officers are not responsible for is student discipline. They are there to respond to criminal incidents. So, in the last school year, more than 5,000 calls for SRO assistance were placed in schools across the city of Portland. Of those, according to the Police Bureau, 13, in PPS schools, 13 students were arrested. 10 of those, which there was no discretion, a judge had ordered their arrest, and no one went to jail. So their goal really is to keep students out of jail. So how did we arrive here? We've been negotiating in good faith for many months, and I just want to share, from my perspective, every revision and change to the IGA has been accepted by the Portland Police Bureau, and I'm thankful for the partnership they've demonstrated throughout this process. So you've also been provided data by the Bureau to help inform your decisions, and, like I mentioned, we've discussed the IGA in two previous work sessions. And lastly, we took some time to engage students to hear feedback, address concerns, and answer questions about the SRO program. So there were five student-led conversations, and we heard a lot of skepticism from students and learned about the fear and anxiety some students, especially students of color, feel when they see or in the presence of police officers. We also heard support from students who expressed feeling safer with their SRO at school. In every conversation, we heard that students don't know their SROs very well, and there's a genuine interest to getting to know them. With this IGA, each SRO will be allowed to spend all five days in their assigned school cluster. So another thing we learned is that education about SROs is necessary, and ongoing dialogue is very important. Some students asked us to return for continued conversations. For example, we're talking with Jefferson High School Principal Calvert to look at future dates, set those up before the winter break, to continue the conversations about this issue and others. And so finally, I'll just close with next steps before you today. It will also go before the Portland City Council. We, as I mentioned, we have learned a lot from the student engagement sessions, and we want to continue that dialogue, so I would imagine that would continue on. You would get full Monday through Friday SRO coverage, and we will begin collecting the disaggregated data, school by school, as you requested, so that we can report back to the Board. And then, I think what we talked about is, immediately in January, we would begin to schedule those quarterly check-ins and include student voices in those check-ins. So I want to open it to Captain Hager, Superintendent. If there's any additional comments, otherwise, I think we're here to answer your questions.
So just briefly, the last time I was here, one of your requests was that we spend some time doing some outreach with the students in PPS, and I want to thank you for that direction because it's not something that I'd been involved in. And it was a great opportunity for me to spend time listening to some of the viewpoints of the students, and there were students who expressed fear at having police in their schools. There were students that were wondering where their SRO was because their school hasn't been assigned one since the beginning of the school year. So, you know, there's some mixed viewpoints on police in schools, and I think that part of the value of what we bring is the ability to bridge the gap between how people feel today and how they may feel tomorrow. And that is an important thing for our SROs to do. And one of the things that I'm probably most excited about this particular IGA is just the time that our SROs will have to do the engagement piece that I think is so important in our community. And they do spend a significant amount of time doing the work part of the job and not as much time doing the engagement piece. And it was very clear to me in speaking to the students that that was an important piece that, for some of them, was missing. I recognize that the SROs that work in the school, they know many students, and many of those students probably were not sitting in the room while I was speaking to them, but the students that were there expressed a desire, or at least some of them, to know who their SRO was, not just in passing. So looking for, you know, I look forward to the opportunity of engaging with the school and making that a reality.
Great. Thank you. Stay close, and we'll call you back up if we have questions. Okay. The Board will now consider Resolution Number 5771, a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the city of Portland through the Portland Police Bureau and Portland Public Schools. In addition, I want to inform the public that we have a summary page that will accompany the IGA, and they're both posted on the PPS website. So do I have a motion and second on Resolution 5771?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So Director Rosen moves, and Director Anthony seconds the adoption of Resolution 5771. Ms. Hewson, is there any public comment?
Yes, we have three. We have Sarah Steele and Isabel.
Great. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Isabel Mace McClatchy. M-A-C-E hyphen M-C-L-A-T-C-H-I-E.
Great. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Steele. I'm the Student Body President of Jefferson High School. That is S-A-R-A-H-S-T-E-E-L-E.
Before we begin, I would like to address that Sarah and I will be sharing the three minutes each allotted to us, so six minutes in total for both of us. Two minutes. Okay. Thank you. To the PPS School Board, we are a group of students from Jefferson High School, and we are here today to ask you to delay your vote on the PPS-PPB Intergovernmental Agreement. Considering the lack of student involvement in the creation of and discussion about this agreement, we strongly believe that moving forward with the vote would be irresponsible at this stage. The voices of PPS students were not prioritized, as evidenced by the fact that neither our Student Council nor our student body were informed of the IGA until last week, as was directed by the Board on October 9th. Portland Public Schools has demonstrated a distinct disregard for the perspectives of the students that these agreements affect. The claim that this agreement is merely a formalization of a currently standing relationship is false, as the IGA introduces a significant amount of money that PPS will now funnel into this program. This is absolutely unacceptable. This issue has been discussed by the Board since at least September 12th, 2018, but Jefferson students were not informed. This agreement was discussed again on October 9th, but again, we were not informed. In fact, the first time Jefferson Student Council members were informed of this agreement was last week, when students were invited to a 3:00 PM meeting at PPS District Offices. Even at this time, we were not informed that this issue would be going to a vote today. Jefferson is the closest high schools to the Office, but is still a 30-minute ride away. Further high schools, more than an hour away. This meeting began before school ended. Only four students ended up going to that meeting. Why was a student engagement meeting set up in such a way that prevented students from attending?
To address this issue, our Principal Margaret Calvert facilitated a meeting that would not conflict with our school hours. This meeting occurred on Thursday, December 6th, 2018. This was our first opportunity to speak with the district representatives, and we were given only two days to prepare. It was at this meeting that students were first informed that this issue would be going to a vote, though only in passing and without any further explanation. At this meeting, though our questions were acknowledged, we felt as though our perspectives were ignored and brushed away. We were listened to, but we were not heard nor understood. It became apparent that PPS and PBB were there to convince us to accept what had already been decided. When students raised concerns about SROs being armed, these concerns were brushed aside without any willingness to further discuss the issue. The same thing happened when people raised concern about racialized police violence, language barriers, and other issues. We are unable to move forward or support this agreement without addressing such fundamental issues. The language in this agreement seems to prioritize communities of color and restorative justice practices, yet PPS has failed to engage these communities, marking a fundamental flaw in the way that this conversation has progressed. At our meeting on Thursday, PPS representatives seemed to be under the impression that having only one student on the Board means that all PPS students are represented. That you consider all students of the different PPS high schools the same is not only incorrect but offensive. That you deny our differences to believe that all 70,000 of us across this district could be accurately represented by one student. No matter how great that one student may be means that you deny us our agency, our choice, and our voices in the conversation that define our educational experiences.
The fact remains that this past week has marked the end of a conversation for you while it marks only the beginning of a conversation for us. Considering this, we are here to ask that the vote on this IGA be delayed until a true effort has been made to include our voices in this conversation. To move forward without doing so sends the message that you don't believe that our perspectives, opinions, and lived experiences are important, and means that you ignore a significant portion of your high school population and the significant concerns that this population has. Not only do students have strong opinions on this issue, but also a strong desire to make those opinions heard. However, nowhere in this process were students given a platform by PPS in which to express these views. During the past 20 hours, we've been conducting an informal survey of Portland Public School students to determine if, how, and when students were informed of this agreement and the impending vote. Out of 309 responses as of 6:00 PM this evening, 75% stated that they did not know about nor hear about this IGA. Of the remaining 25%, an overwhelming majority only learned about this agreement within the last few days, and many of those students stated that they learned about this agreement from friends or social media, not PPS. This shows that students have not only been informed of this agreement, but have not been given enough time to fully consider their own thoughts and opinions about this issue. Additionally, an overwhelming majority of the responding students expressed opposition or hesitation about the SRO program. We're also aware of a petition to delay this vote that was created by a parent at Grant High School. As of 6:00 PM, this petition has 717 signatures. In less than 24 hours, student organizers and parents have been able to include more voices in this conversation than PPS did during the entire last two months. It is clear that students care deeply about this issue but have been given little to no opportunity to engage in conversation. This is unacceptable.
Again, we ask you to delay the vote. Before we finish, we'd like to acknowledge all of the adults who assisted us in crafting this statement, as well as many, many students who assisted us with our survey and the petition.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments.
Through sharing across social media and through responding and signing. We'd also like to acknowledge the students who are unable to make it to this meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Their voices are also vitally important in this conversation. Making the delay of the vote, making the delay of the vote most of all important. Lastly, we would like to extend our thanks for... Lastly, we would like to extend our thanks for having the opportunity to speak tonight. The privilege of this opportunity is not lost on us.
Great. Thank you. All right. Okay. All right. Lastly, we have Leland Baxter Neal.
Good evening, Superintendent Guerrero, Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Leland Baxter Neal, and I'm a staff attorney with American Civil Liberties Union of Oregon. And I am here, as the students, to urge you to delay this vote for, to take time to have meaningful student input. There's little I can say to follow that very moving and powerful testimony from the students, and I heed the Board to take their words very seriously. The American Civil Liberties Union is concerned with both the substance and the process. We are of deep concerns with an effort to increase and further institutionalize the presence of armed law enforcement officers in Portland's public schools. And we urge PPS to allow more time for students, parents, faculty, staff, and at-large public engagement. Over the last week, ACLU has been contacted by members of the PPS community, students, teachers, parents, who complained that the Board was moving an IGA between PPS and PPB forward without adequate opportunity for public comment. Indeed, the Board's own staff analysis and report to the Board suggests that community input was sought very late in the process and was limited to just a few discussions with high school Student Council representatives. It is our understanding that several schools, including majority-minority schools, were completely excluded until very late in the process. Students of color are more likely to be punished, they will be punished, more likely to be punished harshly, and more likely to be funneled into a criminal justice system that has massive racial disparities and can have lifelong consequences. We further understand that the limited listening sessions were conducted with significant law enforcement officer presence. This type of environment may not allow for a really robust discussion of students' concerns about the impacts of armed law enforcement officers in public schools. In fact, this complaint exactly was lodged with the ACLU this week. If the Board's goal is to increase school safety, we urge the Board to reconsider their allocation of limited funding to initiatives that directly impact students without the use of punitive measures, such as restorative justice approaches and effective counseling. Spending money on law enforcement officers does not provide a meaningful reduction in risk, while costing much more than these other initiatives. The ACLU recently did a study of over 96,000 public schools nationwide, addressing the imbalance of student support services, counseling, psychologists, and nurses, and school resource officers. A link to this study has been provided in the materials that we sent you. The report is set to be released later this month. Moreover, studies have already shown that an increased presence of school resource officers does not necessarily increase safety in schools. A seven-year-long study in North Carolina found that the presence of law enforcement officers did not reduce homicides, assaults, bomb threats, substance possession, or many other concerns. We respectfully request that you postpone this vote and listen to these students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any, is there any Board discussion on the resolution?
Madam Chair, I have an amendment I want to offer. So, this has been, it's posted on the PPS.net website, and the overall rationale for the amendment is that there's been a lengthy discussion with the city to co-create this IGA. And while we have had Board meeting discussions, and work session discussions, and the forums last week, that it's probably important for those discussions to continue. And I think there, when you read the IGA, it indicates it's a five-year agreement, but actually, every year, there's the opportunity for us to modify it, or if it's not working for PPS, to terminate it. So, the amendment that I'm going to offer tonight, which I think will give the community an opportunity to continue the discussion, and also for us to identify what's working well, what things need to be improved, that in the amendment, I'm going to add language in the recitals that says, "Recognizing that this formalization of the relationship between PPS and the PPB is a significant change in the structure of the relationship, and there are significant cost implications for the district, a formal one-year review should be undertaken on December 2019, so that the Board of Education can assess whether any modifications need to be made in the IGA. The IGA contains a January 1 notification date for any intent to terminate at the end of the year." And then, in the resolve section, add a section that says, "At the first Board meeting in December 2019, the Superintendent will present to the Board of Education a comprehensive review of the first year of the agreement, including but not limited to disaggregated data about Portland Police Bureau's school resource officers' interactions with students as specified in the IGA, the number and nature of the custodial interviews, the formal and informal engagement and outreach that has occurred between PPS students and families, and individual school resource officers. Whether other city of Portland school districts are also in cost-sharing agreements with the city, and a survey of the high school principals on the change in the school resource officer service level to schools and the implications for their school communities."
Thank you. Do I have a motion? And a second, on Amendment to Resolution 5771?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Director Anthony moves, and Director Konstam seconds the amendment to Resolution 551. Any discussion?
I have discussion. On the Board. Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight, especially for the students out there. My name is Nick Paisler, and I go to Cleveland High School, and I'm a senior. I'd like to take this chance to address the Board, students, the public, and Portland Police tonight on this intergovernmental agreement between PPS and school resource officers. Tonight, I am voting no, on behalf of the students of PPS. I am recognizing the work that has been done in the past few weeks, as well as recognizing the need to meet, recognizing the need to meet, the need to meet to continue discussion and modifications moving forward on this agreement. I was given this item to get student input with one week notice to the original vote. And with the overwhelming voice I heard back, PPS students and I were able to put the vote on hold for further review. Within a week, students gave comment at a leadership summit, at lunch at multiple schools, and at a meeting here at the PPS District Office. But it does not end here. I encourage further work and discussion on this matter, based on what students have said, and more communication with students and Portland Public School, and Portland Public Police on an ongoing basis. We need more time together and more students involved to capture everyone's voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion of the amendment?
So, I just want to provide just some additional context. In the IGA, we have added quarterly reviews and reporting of data that's very specific of what we're interested in having shared with the Board and the broader community. And so, that'll happen on a quarterly basis, but this would allow for a very formal review of what's happened that first year. So, it's supplemental to the check-ins that have already been built into the IGA.
And I also want to add to that, that there will be a student designee as part of that district panel for those check-ins, as Chief of Staff Soden mentioned before.
Motion to delay the vote.
And on the amendment, I would just say, I think it's a very good idea. I certainly support it. I think we should acknowledge, it did come in at the last minute and didn't go through a work group or appear to the Board a week before, which I know is important to some people, but I think it's a great idea.
Any more discussion? Where is it on the website? More discussion?
It's on the meeting materials.
I'm searching for it right now.
If you go to PPS.net, the meeting materials, I found it before the meeting. It was posted this afternoon. And...
Okay. The Board will now vote on amendment. There's no further discussion? Is there further discussion on the amendment? Right. On the amendment.
Excuse me, this is a vote on the amendment, not on the resolution.
The Board will now vote. On the amendment to Resolution 5771, all in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Okay. Are there any abstentions? Student representative?
No.
Thank you. Okay. So, the amendment to Resolution 5771 is approved by a vote of 6 to 0, with student Representative Paisler voting no. Right? Okay. Now, is there any discussion on the resolution? And we might invite Chief of Staff Stephanie Soden and Chief Hager back to the podium.
I think Scott and I have the same question, so you go for it.
What are the ramifications of delaying the adoption of the resolution for a period of time where we have some good student and community engagement?
So, part of the need to have some formalized agreement really is about the Bureau being able to continue providing the service to the Portland Public School system. You know, we, like all entities, are having challenges around budget and challenges around staffing. And either one of those in and of themselves would cause us some issues, but combined together, is going to be a challenge for the Police Bureau, and we are having to look at where we can make up some funding. And so, the decision was to be, you know, actually, the decision to formalize the agreement actually has been something we've wanted to do for a long time. And part of the formalization of this agreement is the agreement to share the cost of the SROs, which will, from my perspective, save the program. Without it, I believe that the program is one thing that the Bureau could cut in order to save costs. Which would mean, which would mean, you would still have police service, you know? 911 still gets a police officer. But as I've explained to you before, the kind of police officer you want coming into your school and the service you want is best provided by an SRO and not a patrol officer. And I hear some of the fears that have been expressed today by people, and I'm telling you to, what I believe would be an absolute degree of certainty, some of those fears will be realized if we remove SROs from schools and we go back to doing, just having our regular patrol, take radio calls.
So, where are you in your fiscal year and budget? Are you saying next week? Are you saying at the end of your fiscal year? Tell me what's...
So, I am, I am not a part of the budget cycle, nor do I participate in the budget cycle. But we run a fiscal year, just like everyone else, from July through June, and they start planning for fiscal, the fiscal costs. They've been meeting. They've had, all they're doing right now is talking about budget stuff. So, my guess is probably by the end of this month, the Bureau will have to submit its budget package to the mayor. And if not this month, maybe next month. That's a little bit of a guess on my part, because that's not my area of expertise. And the one thing I want to point out is that, is that a delay on the vote is, just having this agreement signed doesn't mean that the conversations end. So, I realize that for some people that have spoken tonight, they feel like the delay in the vote is going to, they want it so that they can have a voice in what it says. The reality is, is I've recognized that. I think PPS has recognized that. And the voice is, we're going to listen to those voices, and we can make adjustments to that IGA as it moves along.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Director Konstam.
I think one of the difficult nuances of this conversation is that it can be reduced in the public discussion to a question of cops in our schools or no cops in our schools. And I think we have to recognize that we have a lot of incidents in our schools. Not all of them involve students. A lot of them involve adults. Some of them involve, you know, trespassers and on our property who present threats to our students. I mean, whatever they are, we had, as you said, more than 5,400 calls last year from all of our buildings. So, there will be police presence in our schools. There will be police response in our schools, because stuff happens. So, this process is really about trying to be thoughtful about how to have students' best interests at heart. And I want to say, before anybody feels inclined to heckle, that I absolutely agree that we, student voice should have been where this conversation started. Student engagement should have been where this conversation started, talking about what is the ideal relationship. So, anyway, I just wanted to make that point, that if we don't choose to engage in what is regarded as a national best practice in terms of having trained compassionate officers in our schools, we're still going to have, we're still going to have a lot of police presence. It's not an either-or. And it's also not about cops or counselors, because I think there's a pretty clear distinction between what are the roles of our counselors in addressing the needs of students, and then what are the incidents that get sent to the police. So, I mean, a lot of complexity and a lot of challenges, but I did, I do feel like it's important to make those points.
Thank you. Okay. Any more discussion?
So, I want to thank everybody tonight who shared their opinion, but also, over the last several weeks, we've had lots of either emails or basically messages on social medias. So, the feedback has been useful, and I think it's been heard. I want to thank the officers and Captain Hager, because over the last month since we had our work session and then subsequently the forums, I think it was a useful opportunity for us to understand the difference between a school resource officer and a street officer. And having been a parent in PPS, one of the things that I think about is, you know, so how would I feel as a parent if my students were in a situation where they had either been a perpetrator or a victim of criminal activity? And who would I want to be talking to them? Again, whether, whichever side my child was on, and my strong... Whatever child you want, I would much prefer to have a school resource officer as part of that equation that has had special training and that has a commitment to trauma-informed practices and restorative justice versus to have a call, just go out to 911 and have an officer enter the school that has no history or background with the principal, with the students, with the teachers, or the counselors. And as Director Konstam said, we do have incidences, and it's a question of who it is that is going to arrive and who's best prepared to do that. I want to address one issue that's been raised, and it's about the cost. And I completely agree. I'd much rather be spending the $1 million on a whole host of school support services for our students. And, and, so I'm going to go back to the... And, so, I'm going to go back to, we've had school resources officers for 20 years, and PPS, in the early 2000s and the recession, we paid for those officers. In the early 2000s during the recession, when I was on the board before, the decision was made that PPS, it was really a city responsibility, and that those, the responsibility to provide safety and security to our students and to provide law enforcement services generally to our city was a city responsibility. So, the fact that we're sitting here and the city is now sending the cost back to us, I'm very disappointed in the city leadership, because this is, we, our job is to educate students, and the fact that the city is not providing the resources to support the safety and security of our students, I think is, you know, a failure of political leadership at the city level. So, given the position we're in, one of the reasons that I added into the resolution that at the end of the year, if other school districts aren't picking up the cost, is I believe this is a conversation to have back with the city, that this is something that they should be supporting as part of their responsibilities as the civic institution of the city, and it's not the school district's responsibility to use our funds to ensure our students' safety.
If you're here. Hey. Any other discussion? Director Anthony?
Directors, I'd just like to add that a lot of us up here are talking about personal experiences and personal stories, but we need to keep paying attention to what the students are saying right in front of us about this. So, and I think we need to be more equitable in the decisions we're making.
Director Anthony?
Yeah. If the city is failing, you have a new city council ready to support you. Just wait a little bit.
Thank you. I really appreciate Director Konstam's comments and Director Brim Edwards. I do agree with them. And there's a little more that I wanted to say about exactly those. As adults in Portland talk about the children in our schools, it appears to me that in spite of all of our obvious problems, racism, sexism, gentrification, drug addiction, poverty, homelessness, hunger, and our grotesque inequities in our schools, Portland's adults are determined to think of our children as characters in a Frances Hodgson Burnett novel, where they just need to find the key to the secret garden, or talk to the right kindly old man, or follow the right Robin, and everything that's wrong with their world will magically turn out right. Our children are people. They have the same problems adults have and some pretty spectacular problems of their own, and one of the things that they need in order to be able to make their way in the world is the benefit of law enforcement. It's one of the benefits and the burdens of living in a civilized society. Just what do you think our counselors, and yes, we absolutely need more counselors, are going to be able to do for a little girl who's being pimped for meth? We have dozens of children in our public schools who are being trafficked. I have met many of them. What do you think restorative justice, and yes, we need more restorative justice, is going to offer a little boy who's being molested? Statistically, we currently have many hundreds of children who are. I have met a lot of them. Yes, we need more school staff. What do you think a school staff member is going to be able to do for a little child who's being beaten? We have thousands of children who are being physically abused.
Please be respectful. We've been respectful to those that have come to testify. Please be respectful. Thank you.
What do we think a principal is going to be able to accomplish if one of their students is injured in a hit-and-run, or a victim of theft, or is assaulted on the way to school? And the simple fact of the matter is that every aspect of city, county, and state government that impacts our children is falling to pieces. It's failing repeatedly, habitually, in every one of those circumstances, and in literally thousands of others just like them. The Department of Human Services, the Portland Police Bureau, and state authorities do not respond. Our staff calls, our principals call, and no one responds. The only way that our school staff, our school counselors, our principals can get any leverage, any result out of responsible authority, is to go through our school resource officers. Then we've got a uniform talking to a uniform, and that seems to be the only thing that people in our bureaucracies are willing to listen to. When the average beat officer looks at a school building, what I hear is that they don't see children who often need help and protection. They see a racially mixed group of potential problems who need to be controlled. You don't want the regular beat officers trying to control 500 children at a time. That's not going to end well. We have to have SROs who can get between our children and the beat officers. When the average beat officer interacts with school staff, more often than not, they're talking to a woman. And what I hear over and over again from our staff is that the officer automatically discounts everything she says, lectures her on how she isn't supposed to waste their time, and leaves. We have to have SROs who can get between our staff and the beat officers. PPS has had its current arrangement with the city for about 20 years. Before that, the SROs were direct PPS employees, like Director Brim Edwards said. There was a very short span of time between the two when we had no SROs whatsoever, and the very first thing that happened was that the Portland Police Bureau sent regular beat officers to provide security for a boys' basketball game at Jefferson, and they said dozen squad cars and two dozen cops in riot gear, because, you know, black kids and shotguns are a real good mix. It's like that line in Bill, when we had SROs, it was the one officer who just knew everybody. It's like that line of Bill Murray's in Groundhog Day. You know, maybe God isn't omnipotent. Maybe he's just been around so long that he knows everything. The beat officers' response, their ingrained habitual response, is to escalate. You don't want people who are going to control situations by escalating going into our schools. We have no school resource officers in this district on Monday. PPS students are four times as likely to be arrested on a Monday. You've got to have someone who can self-regulate. You have got to have SROs who are trained how to keep themselves calm, and who can calm situations without first blowing them up. We've got to have SROs who can keep our children safe, because every other tool we have isn't up to the job. And frankly, we have got to have SROs in this district, because I am sick to the eye teeth of having our teachers, our counselors, and our principals call me in tears, hoping to God that I can get somebody off their ass.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Director Rosen? Director Rosen?
I just had a few comments. I want to thank everyone who came out tonight and expressed their opinions. Obviously, this is an important issue. Looking back over the last week, I want to thank the district's student council and the administration for coming forward with additional meetings for students. I really do appreciate the students who were able to show up and the students tonight who testified. I also want to thank the Portland Police Bureau for being at those meetings. I think you did a good job of listening and responding constructively. I think this is an important issue. Obviously, we've had SROs in our schools for almost two decades now, and I think the IGA is a good opportunity to clarify roles and responsibilities. And I do appreciate that we've made some number of important changes to the IGA, and a lot of that has been due to board interaction with the Police Bureau and staff. When I thought about this and the value of SROs, I keep going back to the statistic that we've had something like 5,000 calls, and we've only had 13 arrests. And I agree that without SROs, the least valuable option would be to have, call 911 and get a beat cop to come to the school. In terms of some of the changes or things that the police are emphasizing, I just want to say that I appreciate that we'll have students involved in the hiring of SROs, that we're going to take these quarterly meetings seriously in evaluating the IGA, and that we'll have students involved in that. We talked a lot about flexibility in appearance of police cars and SR uniforms, and I appreciate that. And I did hear loudly that students don't know who their SROs are, but I believe that with increased presence, there'll be more opportunities for SROs to get out into the student community, and I appreciate you making that a priority. And I just want to say finally that I truly believe the SROs are useful and purposeful in carrying out their duties and will continue to be an asset to our schools. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Director Bailey?
Did you say director? Yeah, okay. I just want to reiterate a lot of what Mike said, Director Rosen said. I think the IGA is a very good draft agreement. I want to thank staff for their work on that, and the partners in the Police Bureau for their work on that. And we have identified in this district, a weak spot has been communication and engagement before decision-making. So, I am going to propose that we table this until mid-February to give us time to do At that point, I would be, you know, if we came back ground, had good public process, and brought this exact IGA back, I absolutely would vote yes on it because of what's in here. If there's improvements that come out of that process, great, we can look at that, too.
So, Nick?
I'm going to second what Scott said in the fact that, again, directors, we have students right in front of us who are talking about that they want to extend the time to get more voice on this. I tried for a week, but we're going to need a lot more time, because look at all this. As well as going back to the, you know, some personal statements made up here, parents, I think parents play a part in this, too. I'm a student, but we didn't even have a chance to reach out to parents. I don't think, like many, like, there's many groups that just have not had the chance to talk and go over this. So, I don't know, I'm just going to just keep reinstating that, so.
And the other piece is, I think it would be useful for all of us to hear what school counselors and principals say as well. And it may not be what you think it is. So, I will make that as a motion to table.
And is there a second?
A second.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded to delay the vote until February?
Mid-February.
Mid-February. Okay. Now, we just hold the vote? Discussion? Any discussion?
I appreciate your motion, Director Bailey. I really believe this is the smart and compassionate way to, I mean, having SROs in our schools, I think, is a more, is a smarter and more compassionate approach than having the cop on the beat responding to our kids' needs. I think that's been proven all over the country. But I also believe that we'll only be better by hearing more from our school communities about how to do it right. And I want to really express that I support this very much. And I also want to really express that, you know, in the language of the amendment that was brought forward tonight, there's a lot of specific requests, one of which is disaggregated data about the interactions of SROs and students. And what that really is, is a recognition that racial profiling is real. And our students feel it and experience it and express it to us every day, loud and clear. And that's no criticism to the officers that also recognize that and are also very self-critical about their own biases and all the good training that's going on in the Police Bureau. I believe that that's real, too, and that there's a lot of work on that front. But I do think that we can benefit from a short amount of time, and we want to send a signal to the city to say, we're coming back, and I support the investment that this represents, too, the monetary investment, because we need to keep our kids safe. But we need to make sure that this, we have the right agreement and that we are in conversation with our school communities. And I appreciate Scott's point about hearing from some of the adults in the buildings who rely on our school resource officers, because they haven't really been part of this conversation either.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Well, I would say if there's a delay, I think we definitely should go back to the city and talk about their responsibilities and the appropriate use of our resources and their resources.
I agree.
Further discussion? Okay, if not, now we'll vote on Director Bailey's amendment to postpone, or the resolution to postpone the vote.
The motion to table.
The motion to postpone the vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed to delaying the vote, indicate by saying no. No. And any abstentions with student Representative Paisler voting?
Yes.
Yes. And the motion?
That was unclear.
Yeah.
We might need a voice vote.
Yeah, I think we need a voice vote. Director Anthony?
No.
Director Rosen?
No.
Oh, did you call them? Okay. Let's start again. Director Anthony? No.
No.
Director Rosen?
No.
Director Brim Edwards?
No.
Director Konstam?
Yes.
Director Bailey?
Yes.
And Chair Asparza Brown?
No.
Now, we're going to vote on Amendment Resolution 5771. All in favor? I'm sorry? Okay. All in favor on Resolution 5771? Please indicate by saying yes. Any opposed? Indicate by saying no. No. Any abstentions? With student Paisler voting?
We're voting on the resolution.
So, the motion passes by a vote of five to one, with student Representative Paisler voting?
No.
I didn't vote on that. I'll abstain on the underlying resolution.
So, we're voting on the actual resolution. I mean, do we need to take? Okay, so, let's take a vote. Ms. Hewson? Director Anthony?
Yes.
Director Rosen?
Yes.
Director Brim, I'm sorry. Director Brim Edwards?
Yes.
Director Konstam?
Abstain.
Director Bailey?
Abstain.
And Chair Asparza Brown?
No.
I'm sorry, I need four votes.
What?
It's three, you have to have four votes, so it's three to one to two abstentions.
So, I would ask if there's anybody who wants to reconsider their abstention? I'd like to ask if any board members want to reconsider their abstention?
Well, could you explain your vote? Would you be willing to explain your vote?
Yeah, I'm perfectly willing to explain my vote. Yeah. No, and I really appreciate all the work that went into this and how carefully the PP listened to us. But as a person of color, and, you know, my group that I've worked for years for in education are kids of color and kids with disabilities, and unfortunately, those are the groups that are disproportionately targeted and have been in the juvenile justice system. And I know from personal experience myself, as a young woman of color, that I was targeted when, you know, for no reason. So, for many of us, there's fear when we see uniformed police rather than feeling of safety and comfort. And I just want to acknowledge that. And I think that I've also been a vocal advocate of, at Portland State... And I think that I've also been a vocal advocate of, at Portland State, in my role there, against armed police force at our university as well, so that I just have to kind of live my value and ethics on that. So that is why I'm voting no.
So we are in a predicament here because we do not have consensus on approval of the IGA, but we have also rejected the motion to bring the IGA back in February after a public engagement. So I, I'm not comfortable leaving this hanging. I believe that we should have more engagement with our students and our staff, but right now, the majority of the board has rejected that pathway, and then we're in a position of rejecting the IGA. So that's indefensible to me, and I'm not sure really where to go.
So if the motion failed?
I'm going to change my vote.
Is that legal? Ms. Hewson?
So I'll make a new motion. I'm gonna move that we, the board reconsider Resolution 5775.
Five, seven, seven, one.
Seven, one.
And, well, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second to Director Brim Edwards?
I don't know what the motion is.
Is this allowed, or can we have a reconsideration of the vote? I think I called for the reconsideration before it was closed.
I think you can go forward with a renewed motion. Yes.
With a renewed motion?
A renewed motion to vote on Resolution 5771.
So that's been moved.
Second.
So this is the same underlying motion to approve the IGA with no modification?
As amended by the amendment that was already approved.
With the original amendment that was approved?
Yes.
Yes. So we have a motion to vote on, re-vote on Resolution 5771 as amended, as moved by Director Brim Edwards and seconded by Director Rosen? Who seconded? Director Anthony. All in favor? Vote, indicate by vote saying yes? Yes. Any opposition? Those opposed, indicate by saying no. And the motion?
And one abstention.
And one abstention. So the motion is five votes of yes, one abstention, with Student Representative Paisler voting.
No.
Okay, now we have the motion on the table again, of Resolution 5771 as amended. And I think, again, Ms. Hewson, can we call the vote? Director Anthony?
Yes.
Director Rosen?
Yes.
Director Brim Edwards?
Yes.
Director Konstam?
Abstain.
Director Bailey?
Yes.
And Chair Esparza Brown?
No.
Motion passes. Okay, the motion, Resolution 55, 5771, passes with a vote of, what is it? Four to one. Four to one with one abstention and one no vote. And Student Representative Paisler voting no. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is a second reading, the District Performance Auditor Board Policy. There have been a number of policies that have been recommended to the board by the Policy and Governance Committee, and they have had both a first reading and a public comment period. So I would like to have Committee Chair, Director Brim Edwards, introduce the first policy for the board's final consideration.
Thank you, Chair Esparza Brown. So what we have before us is the District Performance Auditor Policy 1.60, .40. It's here for a second reading, which will be a final approval. Earlier, the board had a first reading on this policy. We've had a 21-day public comment period, and we have not had any public comment, I believe, Ms. Powell?
No public comment.
No public comment on the auditor's policy? Thank you. So just as background, this is an existing policy that we're modifying, and essentially, we're clarifying that district auditors that are district employees report to the Audit Committee, but have an administrative reporting relationship to the Deputy Superintendent of Business and Operations for administrative employment-related issues, for example, paid time off, payroll processing, et cetera. The proposed amendments also clarify that the board retains the ultimate authority to hire, evaluate, and terminate the employment of the auditor. This is best practice. The proposed amendments also streamline the policy language to not restate auditing standards, and those auditing standards are the generally accepted government auditing standards. So in our policy, we had a number of those, just restatements of the actual standards, and we're just taking that out because it's not necessary. So this came out of the committee originally with a unanimous recommendation. It's, was, modifications were made with the staff. I should note that there's no direct fiscal impact for the policy amendments. The board did include, in this year's budget, funding for two performance auditor positions in the budget, which the Audit Committee, which is meeting next week, will be involved in the hiring. So, Madam Chair, that is the second reading of the district auditor policy.
I'm sorry, Director Brim Edwards, if you already mentioned, but did we receive public comment?
We did not.
On this? Okay, thanks.
The board will now consider Resolution 5772, Amendment of District Performance Auditor Policy 1.60, .040-P. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Director Konstam moves, and Director Anthony seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5772. Ms. Hewson, is there any public comment on the resolution?
No.
There is not. Is there any board discussion? Okay. Then the board will now vote on Resolution 5772. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5772 is approved by a vote of six to zero, with Student Representative Paisler voting?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'd also, yes.
Could we have a five-minute recess? I need to go clear my head.
Yes, okay. This board will take a five-minute recess to, recess. Thank you.
7:50.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll take one of those.
Excuse me. Is there anything on the agenda tonight for their Benson High School?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Hmm, actually, where we see?[1110.26]
No, I just mean the decisions, yeah.
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 I don't know that we would have had our choice.
Yeah, that's true, that's, that's your point, except for the, I don't know, actually in student engagement sessions, do students really like have an opportunity to get into the details? They're like, a little more positive.
Every student that I talked to who knew an SRO was positive.
Me too.
Any students who didn't know it, it was more like the cops.
Right.
And most of them.
Oh my god.
How do we get everybody back? What do we say? Ready? Just talk into your mic and just say, please.
Okay, we're ready to restart the meeting. There comes Director Bailey. Uh, where am I? Okay.
So now I do this? And you're gonna say something?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right, let's get this party started. Well, I guess we can't quite yet.
Only because I want to get the hell over here. All right, thank you. Yeah. Did, where's Nick? Do we need to wait for Nick?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, thank you. We'll resume now with an announcement about the creation of Board Audit Committee. Along with the board members who will be serving on the committee, we want to thank Directors Brim Edwards, Anthony and Rosen for serving on our newly recreated Board Audit Committee. And Director Brim Edwards is going to tell us a little more about the public positions on the committee.
So this is just an announcement, it's also on PPS.net. And we're sort of, it's an announcement out to the auditing community. We're looking to fill the community member slot of the District Audit Committee. The committee is appointed by the Board of Education, is made up of three school board members and two community members. Committee members serve two-year terms, the time commitment is three to eight hours a month. Currently, one community position is vacant. If you have auditing experience and would like to apply, submit a letter of interest and resume to msalvador@pps.net. And again, this is also on the PPS website if people want more information or want to look at the actual description of the position. The Audit Committee is having its first organizing meeting on December 17th from 4:30 to 5:30.
Great, thank you for the information. Okay, now we're going to have second readings on policy rescissions. So we've had several other policy recommendations that are ready for final consideration tonight. And once again, Committee Chair Brim Edwards, please share the background on the next action items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the next set of second readings we have, which is our final approval votes, they're on a series of policy rescissions. So generally, these are policies that are either outdated, duplicative, or have not been modified for a long time and are not part of the current practice. And instead of describing each one why we're going to rescind, I'm just going to read the policies that we're actually going to be voting, getting ready to vote on right now to rescind. We're going to vote, be voting on the reporting statement of economic interest, the method of board operations, the job description, employee suggestion award program, the tax-deferred annuities, compensation-related benefits, orientation of teachers, alternative to military leave, employment and institution of higher learnings, restoration of health, administrative in-service requirements, retirement permanently disabled, administrative clerical personnel salary schedule, and the educators council, professional compensation, professional improvements, and professional growth incentives. And I'll just say in those last five, there is nothing actually in the, in the policy itself, it's just blank. So while the titles sound like we should have a professional compensation policy, there's nothing actually in it. So again, this is some cleanup of our policies before we have a comprehensive review next year. These have all had a first reading. Ms. Powell, or Ms. Hewson, no public comment, correct? So there's been no public comment, and they were referred out of the committee on a four to zero vote initially. And I think we're ready for final consideration.
Okay, the board will now consider resolution 5773, resolution to rescind board policies. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Director Anthony moves and Director Konstante seconds the motion to adopt resolution 5773. We have heard that there was no public comment. Is there any board discussion on this resolution? Okay, the board will now vote on resolution 5773. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5773 is opposed by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative Payzler voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we have first readings on four policies this evening, and I'd like to ask Director Brim Edwards, as Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, to introduce each of the first readings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have four policies before us. There are some of the four, some of that are complete rewrites, others are small changes. So I'm just going to walk through them one by one, and then you can let people know where they, the first reading was. So the first policy that we have before us is, it's currently called off-campus activities. It's been renamed to field trips, foreign travel, and other off-campus activities. And it's an extensive rewrite. And just spent a little bit of time of what actually the rewrite of this policy was, and I want to thank the Risk Management and the General Counsel's Office for the assistance on this. In the Mitch Whitehurst report that we received regarding staff misconduct, we had a whole host of recommendations. There were two policy recommendations included in the Mitch Whitehurst report. This is one of the two, the other one is the currently still in committee. So this, this is a policy that was a recommendation really to improve student safety and to clarify and directly address professional boundaries. The policy does several things. It requires board approval for out-of-state travel and also any foreign travel. The circumference for where the board needs to approve is anything over a hundred, a hundred miles, and that's designed to allow students to go to Fort Vancouver. Previously, that was out-of-state required board approval, but now anything within a hundred miles will be within the superintendent's purview to approve, and anything outside of that, which is a sort of prudent course of practice for the board to approve out-of-state travel, more than a hundred miles, and also foreign travel. In addition, just point out some specific pieces. So basically, it reorganizes the policies to divide sort of travel and activities that are not at our schools into three categories. First, there's school-sponsored travel, then there's non-school-sponsored activities, and then third, there's travel safety programs. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of things in each of the sections that are probably important. The committee had a lot of discussion about this, that for school-sponsored activities, that we specify again who approves. We've added language that really goes to the heart of equity, that no field trip shall be authorized if any student would be excluded from participating because of lack of sufficient funds. And I must thank the superintendent for adding that language. In addition, it also, for cases in which large groups of students are leaving a school, it specifies that the off-campus activities shall not compromise the integrity and purpose of the district's educational programs, and that for the students who are not going on the, any, out of the travel, that there be continuity of curriculum for those students who are still in school. So really kind of keeping, keeping an eye on our core mission. In the section of off-campus activities that are non-school-sponsored, there is, has been historically some sort of gray area where trips that might have been led by staff members had the, left the impression maybe that they were school district sponsored. And this new language is, makes it very clear that either a trip is school-sponsored or it's not, and if it's not, district resources, whether it's email, you know, our rooms, any way of communicating with our students or putting a label on it that somehow it's connected to a school club or a school activity, that that's prohibited. So really making clear what's within, what's an educational school-related activity that's been approved by PPS and gone through a pretty extensive vetting process. So as parents, I think that would be what we would expect. And for those that aren't making very clear that these are private trips and public resources are not to be used. In addition, there was some language related to senior trips, which we've deleted because those would fall under the same rules of anything we already have. Me neither.
Maybe an eighth grade trip.
And then there was also a whole section on ski programs, which has been deleted as well. The third category is travel study programs, and again, it has some pretty specific disclaimer requirements and how information can be distributed for those trips. So the, really the thrust behind, and one last very important item, is the expectation that any staff participating as chaperone or attending with students that our code of conduct for staff apply. So again, really being clear about what the, what the rules and our expectations of staff conduct with students when they're traveling with them is. So again, this, this came out of the committee, it had a fair amount of work over several, I think, three, three meetings. And again, we appreciate the support from the General Counsel's Office and Risk Management. There potentially could be, so after, we have a first reading tonight, but potentially there could be another amendment that could be offered, but that likely would be a substantive amendment and have a 21-day comment period as well. And that is, was an amendment that Director Moore was thinking about, but we don't, it wasn't developed by the time it left committee. Go ahead.
So probably not a policy question, but related to field trips, sometimes they're, you know, educational purpose, and occasionally there's the end-of-the-year kind of fun trip. And a student could get disciplined and said, "You don't get to go on it because you broke rules." Whether that belongs, something, a statement about that belongs in policy or not, I just think it ought to be discussed at some level to say, "Is that an appropriate disciplinary action?"
I have, I have talked with some teachers who are going to be submitting comment on this first read, reading on exactly that point, and also nuances around how field trips are approved within a building, because often it's at the initiative of the teacher, and so you might have a teacher who's really excited about these out-of-school activities and plans a lot of them that are really enriching, and other teachers that don't do it at all, and it ends up really inequitable, and we have parents who have concerns about that, too. I'm sorry, Superintendent.
I think you both raise important points here, is if we truly believe that field trips are truly part of the educational experience, then who has access to them and not? It also has some implications for student discipline. And this is, this is a big area of work that we want to dive deeper into regarding a behavior matrix. And what I mean by that is expectations and what are appropriate levels of consequence, and how do we not deny all students to these same educational experiences? So I think this is a first step. I think the next layer is to make sure we clarify guidance to all of our schools for all those school-level sort of local field trips, and sort of who gets to participate, and how is that tied or not tied to student discipline? So I think that's just the next layer of work for us.
Yes, so Director Bailey, I think that would be in the discipline policy. I will say there was pretty significant discussion within the committee about the issue of equity. And if you, there's a spreadsheet that has all the approved field trips, and you know, many of them have costs, and some of them have some pretty significant costs, especially the ones out of state. And the question about, those are considered, a lot of times, the check, the box that's checked is optional, which I think really goes to the heart of whether it's really optional or not.
Do you mean whether the field trip is optional or the payment is optional?
It's, the box is whether the field trip is optional or required. And almost all the ones that at least we've, that have come through over the last, I don't know, five months have all, all been checked, marked optional.
A screen, that can be a screen.
Right, well, if it's required, then they don't have to pay. So I think there's some questions, maybe when we get to the, both the equity issue, the equity policy, that that will be something that will come into play, plus also our foundation and fundraising.
What I appreciated about the discussion in the Policy Committee is it's not just issues of student participation, but staff participation, because they're on the payroll, and it's a school day. And so if it's an educational experience, there should be equitable access.
Absolutely. Thank you. Great, so that, any other questions in committee? So again, if people, when they read the, the new draft, if there's something that they have a question about, or we haven't quite got the language right, or you'd like to suggest some other language, if you're not, if you're on the committee, bring it to the committee, if you're not on the committee, raise it with us, because we have an opportunity over the next 21 days to amend it. Again, though, this is, this is the second policy that was recommended in the Mitch Whitehurst report that we'll be moving forward.
Great, thank you. The next policy?
The next policy is much more straightforward. It's the, we're amending the cash management policy, 8.20.010. The current policy requires the policy to be adopted every year. And we have a recommendation from staff that instead of amending it, instead of approving it and adopting it every year, that we amend the policy that we, if we, if we want to amend it, that that's when we would be voting on it. It's kind of unique among all our policies that requires us to vote on it, which is kind of a, not a normal practice. So instead, staff will provide a quarterly update on the district's investment portfolio. So what we have before us is a 13-page policy. We have essentially just two small changes. We're deleting the words "at least annually" in accordance with ORS 294.155, and more frequently as the board requests. So we're striking that, we're adding the word "quarterly," so we're going to get those reports quarterly. And then on page 13, we're striking the entire Section 12. It's just not needed, because we can amend policy anytime we want to, we don't need to have a policy that tells us that we can do that. So this is a relatively straightforward, it was recommended out of committee on a four-zero vote. Any committee members have anything to say about this? Questions?
What's a banker's acceptance?
A banker's acceptance.
Ms. Hertz, is she here?
Page seven.
Is Claire here?
She was.
Deputy Hertz, are you in the house?
She's deep in discussion with the.
Could somebody?
Hey Claire!
So we're on the cash management policy, and there was a question by Director Bailey on.
What is a banker's acceptance?
Okay, so what page are you on? I'm sorry.
Page, page seven, and it lists what we can invest in, which is, I know most of those as being reasonably safe, secure. What's a banker's acceptance?
It is another form of investment, but they, these are all approved by the state statutes. We would, we only recommend what we're allowed to put forward in based on the state legislature.
So you don't know what it is either?
It is, it is a, it is definitely an investment that we, we do purchase from time to time, but it's not one of the most frequent flyers.
So you're, this doesn't let you get into day trading?
No.
Okay.
So Director Bailey, we can get an answer to you if you need more definition by the second reading?
I'll Google it.
Any other questions? So this, like the first one, will be on the district website. The last day for public comment is January 2nd, and the final vote will be at the, in the second reading at the next board meeting after that. The third.
I just want to mention one thing about our cash management policy. It doesn't have to do with the proposed changes, but we did have significant discussion and review of this policy last year and found that we were not always in compliance with our timelines and some of our obligations, and went through a pretty rigorous process there. And just for the public, I am sufficiently convinced that we are now back in line with regard to Y's cash management policies. So it was good that we did a bit of a deep dive last year.
Great, so the third policy that came out of the Policy and Governance Committee, and that was on a four-to-zero vote, was a recommendation to have a first reading on amendment of reimbursement expenses for the Board of Directors. The current policy allows the district to provide board members reimbursement of actual expenses or stipends. The proposed amendment conformed the policies to state law, limiting the reimbursement options to only reimbursement of actual expenses. So pretty straightforward, just make some, just strike some language in this to have actual reimbursements be the standard by which expenses are reimbursed. And again, pretty straightforward, it is going to be posted on the district website. That, that's the only thing this change in the policy does. Any questions or comments?
What is the, can you paraphrase, paraphrase the statute language that prohibits an annual stipend?
It, it actually says the reimbursement for actual expenses. So a stipend is not, is a stipend not a reimbursement for actual expenses?
Thank you.
They're reimbursement for, I'm sure, theoretical expenses that are way more than the stipend, but they are not the reimbursement of actual expenses, which is what the statute says. Any other questions? Okay, that'll be out for public comment till January 2nd. The last policy that came out of committee, and I think we're, we'll see this one again at a later date, but this is a first, again, this is to conform to statute. This is the amendment to Student Representative Duties 1.20.012, and also to the Board of Education 1.20.101. And the current, current policies describe the rights, responsibilities, and duties of the student representative to the board. The proposed amendments put all the content related to student representative duties in the student representative policy, so it takes some out of, removes some of, you'll see them stricken from the second policy, this Board of Education policy, and puts them into the student representative policy. And also make clear the student representative is, has an important role on the school board, but is not technically a member of the board by law. So I want to note, so this is really, again, consolidating and making sure that our policy actually complies with the law. And I should note that in spring of this year, the student representative at the time, Moses Tran, had a number of revisions that he wanted to make to the student representative policy, including the creation of the district student council. He was working with Director Moore. He went off to PSU before we got them completed. So we're now in a position, while we'll make these, these changes are before us, and they're technical, legal changes, that also I know that in addition to the changes that Student Representative Tran had, that our current student representative is actively in discussions with Director Konstante and others about how to really enrich the student voice. And I think maybe tonight we've some lessons learned that we can incorporate. So that, that will be coming back to us, but this is just a, let's get the, our policies in compliance with law. And you could, go ahead.
To back up on the student, student rep piece, I would also add that the superintendent has put that forward as a piece of his work plan for the coming year, which includes hiring, a position, does that position report to you? Will that position report to you? I'm not sure. Chief?
In our Office of Student Support Services.
Office of Student Support Services. That would be the student liaison, which is an important role that used to exist in the district and hasn't for a little while, and I think will be really helpful in terms of figuring out how students can navigate, bringing their concerns to the right places in a timely way. So thank you for prioritizing that.
And we're excited about collaborating with our student leaders and identifying that person, and really bring a coherent approach to supporting all our student leadership efforts across the portfolio.
Thank you.
Can I add real quick? And on this note, the student, the DSC's plan after the first of the year is to continue what was, continue the work that was start, that was started last year, to revamp the student representative policy, as well as revamp the district student council, I mean, you know, all in one, and to include that district liaison as well. So we look forward to working with ELT and Board on that.
Great, we'll have, hopefully, a cleaned-up, compliant policy for you to develop off of. And we look, we look forward to that. Any? Wait just a second, and we'll finish this one. Is there any other questions about, we'll get back to it, on the student representative policy for the first reading? Okay, so just like the other policies, it will be posted on pps.net, and the last day for comment will be January 2nd. The committee then will consider any comment, and then we'll come back to the board for a second reading. That's it, Madam Chair?
All right, thank you. Just to reiterate, the four proposed policies will be posted on the board website, and public comment period is 21 days, with the last day to comment, January 2nd, 2019. We will hold a second reading of the policies at our January 8th meeting. Okay, next, will you? Oh, sorry, Director Bailey!
He still wants the answer to his banker's question.
You want your answer?
I Googled it, and let's see what you found.
If you went to the same place.
Well, it's basically a promise from the bank to make a payment in a future date, and it is used extensively, first of all, they say it's a very safe investment, okay? And that it's used for a company that, especially in foreign trade, where they will make a deposit, and the bank will accept it and make a promise for a future payment. So it, it's a higher interest rate.
Gotcha. And the key thing is it's guaranteed by the bank.
Yes.
As opposed to commercial paper, which is a short-term loan to a corporation, which is not guaranteed.
Correct.
And mostly it works, but sometimes, as we look in the past of our great financial system, we've had banks blow up, because they got caught sideways with commercial paper.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. History lesson, okay. All right, next, Benson Master Plan Draft Resolution and Bond Accountability Committee input. The board has had several discussions on the Benson Master Plan, and we'll continue that discussion tonight on the draft resolution. But first, we will receive input from the Bond Accountability Committee, and I'd like to ask Kevin Spelman to provide their comments. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Directors, Student Representative, Superintendent. I'm Kevin Spelman, representing the Bond Accountability Committee, and with me is Tom Peterson, who, as usual, will help me out when I get myself into trouble here. Thanks for the opportunity to provide input on the Benson Master Plan. Due to the short timeframe, we were not able to arrange our schedules to have a committee meeting, but each of our committee members have reviewed the last work session that you had a couple of weeks ago, and read all the materials, and we posed additional questions to staff, and as usual, they were very forthcoming in providing comprehensive answers. And before I get into any of the detail, I want to be clear that the committee is united in supporting the full modernization of Benson High School, so I don't want any doubt about that. But before we talk about Benson, we need to put it in context, because we've kind of got ourselves into a situation in the 2017 bond program by looking at projects individually, and not necessarily considering the, the full impact. As you know, Benson's the last piece of the budget designation, and so whatever we do with Benson, there are insufficient funds in the 2017 bond to provide. So that's the context. The draft resolution, I think appropriately, refers to the long-range facilities plan, and Director Bailey, you served on that committee, and the guiding principles. And one of those guiding principles, there's only four, demonstrate fiscal responsibility. And as you know, we've really focused on that as a committee. We're all aware of the lingering questions regarding how the project estimates were arrived at for the, the bond referral, and we're not going to delve into that. Your performance auditors are looking at that, they're here tonight, by the way, and, and they anticipate having a report to you as in the timeframe you asked for. But it's hard to, leaving that aside, it's hard to conclude that the bond program has exhibited real cost discipline, or that it's been effective. And it's really not the magnitude, as so much as the rate of change, that concerns us. In April of this year, the then CFO reported to the board that the program shortfall would be $89 million. In August, staff reported that after taking into account estimated bond premium and interest income, the shortfall would be $132 million. Now, four months later, if the current master plan budget were to be approved, and again, considering bond premium and interest income, that shortfall would be $182 million. We also note that the current budget documents don't show any explicit allocation for planning at Cleveland, Jefferson, and Wilson, which were included, as you know, in the bond program. I've been told that that will come out of the program contingency, which I guess is fine. The program contingency, so you know, is $19 million, 2%. So let's, in that context, let's consider Benson High School. And we have some concerns over the budget, because the budget progression for Benson has been similar to the program as a whole. The middle-of-the-road estimate that was developed in 2017 showed a project total at $256 million. And as we know, the bond referral only included 202 million, but that's a puzzle to be sorted out. But from that 256, by May of this year, the estimate had climbed to 269 million. And it's now at $313 million. Now, staff, as you know, has offered unidentified value engineering, and what we think is an unwise reduction in design-construction contingency, which gets it to the recommended $296 million. And no explanation has been, as far as we know, for that budget creep has been offered. Again, it's the rate of change here that really troubles us. And, and as we look at the big picture of the current estimate, and we haven't looked at the detail, I hope we get that opportunity at our meeting in January, we're concerned about a lack of consistency with other projects in, in some of the line items, and we believe that further work needs to be done, so before we can have confidence in these numbers. The $296 million translates to $812 per square foot, and we may be beaten this to death, but we would still like to see some comparable benchmarking from other districts before accepting this number as reasonable. When we look at the scope of the project, we share the concern of some of the board members about proceeding with the Benson design before the district-wide CTE plan is completed and adopted. Obviously, the plan itself is well outside our purview and our capability, but it does seem like Benson High School is central to the district CTE objectives and plans. And therefore, there's a strong possibility, it seems, that adjustments would need to be made to the Benson design at some point, with cost and schedule implications. Now, there are competing narratives, frankly, about the status of the CTE plan. We've been told that it won't be complete till fall of '19, but we've also been told that the key elements have already been decided and have no effect on Benson. And we're not capable of, of making a judgment of that, that's frankly few to judge. The future of the various multiple pathways to graduation programs also causes concern, and you heard some testimony tonight about that subject. Staff has indicated that direction at least can be determined by March, and that would not affect the timeline for the project. Maybe correct, I don't know, but it seems like it's a bigger question than that. It's more than saying, these programs currently use 22,000 square feet, we've got 15,000 available, how do we squeeze them in? Should they have 22,000? Should they have 50? Should they be elsewhere? That seems like it needs to be settled. One of the other guiding principles from the long-range facilities plan that's been actually kind of sorely absent is develop partnerships. And it seems to us that Benson High School has more opportunities to pursue partnerships than frankly almost anywhere else. And so therefore, any delay at this point certainly could be used to pursue partnerships that would improve the final product. Then, of course, we have to consider additional funding, because there is not enough under any circumstances in the 2017 bond. The staff recommendation, as you know, contemplates that any funding shortfall on this project, and therefore the program, will be included in the 2020 bond referral, which if passed, would allow the full project to proceed on schedule. We recognize, again, and support the commitment to complete the full Benson modernization. What that means is there can be no failure at the ballot box in 2020. So we have to be very clear about what we're asking for, why we're asking for it, before we should expect voters to approve it. Passage should not be taken for granted, so we think that this should be considered as the project is, design is being developed. We don't want to be in a situation where a bond referral fails, and then we have to scramble to see how, what are we going to do with our existing funds? How does that work with a design and phasing program plan at Benson? This is the time to be doing that. Most of all, we certainly need to learn the lessons from the planning of the 2017 bond, and it's not too soon to be working on a plan for a 2020 bond. It seems likely that there are already too many candidates to fit into a 2020 bond. We've got a complete Benson, which should take priority in our judgment. There's talk of potentially multiple pathways being included in 2020. We, of course, have additional health and welfare need, health and safety needs, and there should be consideration of Wilson, Cleveland, and Jefferson, and maybe others. That's probably too much. Absolutely. So we need the best scope definition we can get, we need to have the best explanation of the purpose of the Benson program, we need a CTE plan, and we need a budget that is acceptable to the voter. So in summary, it's unfortunate, but we are where we are. We think that the master plan resolution should be delayed while these issues are addressed. What effect will the CTE, district-wide CTE plan have on Benson High School? It seems to us that it doesn't necessarily need to be complete, but it needs to be far enough along, so we know the implications of it. The future of the MPG programs needs to be determined before we proceed and make a decision by default on those programs. We need more confidence in the project estimate, so that we can, in good faith, go back to the voters, if that's where we're going, to ask for more money. And we, as I said, we can use that time to work on potential partnerships that should improve the project, and who knows, maybe even get some money. We recognize that any delay creates risk in itself. There's certainly a risk of additional escalation, although I would resist the implication that the current extraordinary escalation will still be in place, say, four years from now. Maybe it'll be worse, I don't know. It could be better. So we don't really know what that risk is, how to quantify that risk, but it's a risk, certainly. A bigger risk to us is the risk of future changes in the design and construction because of CTE program, or multiple pathways, et cetera. And if we don't do our best to, to frankly restore the district credibility at this point, we have a serious risk of not getting additional funding. That's our, our input. We'd be happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you. Board members, is there any further discussion, questions?
Director Brad Edwards. So first of all, you said delay, are you talking about two weeks or a year? I mean, there's really profound...
Yep.
Difference to the question, a delay in one year at a simple 6% cost escalation would be 15 to 20 million dollars.
Right.
I guess I would add that part of the challenge, you have, you keep on the current schedule, at some point, you're going to have to enter into a contract with a general contractor. And so what is that contract going to look like? You don't have funding to fund the entire contract. So at some, you're probably going to have to come up with some sort of a phasing plan or some kind of a means to make sure that you don't put yourself in a position where you have a, a contract that you can't meet their obligations. So the likelihood is it's going to get delayed anyway, just because of the challenges that come with trying to con, to build this thing without having adequate, adequate funding.
So we already had a presentation by our external financial advisor, and that a bridge financing would be using the full faith and credit if, that there wasn't a bond or it got delayed, but there, there are alternative financial mechanisms that can be used, so I, I don't think, and we had a pretty extensive discussion earlier when we approved the other projects, and Benson was the last in the sequence, that just because they were last in the sequence meant that they were going to last, and I think we had a pretty extensive board discussions about what that backstop bridge financing would be if there wasn't a bond, but because the school's not going to actually be started to build until the time that we put a bond on the ballot, that we would actually know with some certainty, but we do know that there is an alternative mechanism to finish the project, because I don't think we would have approved... don't think we would have approved the other two proj, the other three projects without that assurance.
Director Brim Edwards, to answer your, have another stab at answering your question. We don't know the answer. We don't know when the CTE plan will be sufficiently along to be certain that the implications for Benson can be embedded in the current design. We don't know how long it will take to determine what the district should be doing with the multiple pathways programs. And multiple programs, as you know, it's a complex issue way beyond our capability. So we don't know how long that would take. We don't know how long, probably the easiest one to solve is the certainty in the estimating. But, so I don't know what that could be, but it could be relatively short period.
Yeah, I guess if I were to take the individual pieces of the questions that you ask, so we have a internal performance auditor that we've contracted with that we're going to get a report back on the 31st, so that'll answer, I think, some of the questions. I would suggest if there's individual line items, as you suggested, that you have questions about, we should get those into the process, but that's an individual issue. I think the issue of sort of the overall cost estimate, hopefully in March 31st, when we get the sort of performance audit review, that they'll be able to identify what led to some of these, the cost escalations. I wanted just to ask Superintendent Guerrero about the CTE plan because when we had it presented to the board, it was like, what, two months ago? There was a pretty detailed framework that showed pathways at all of our high schools that, and sort of the progression of how this was going to roll out, and we were going to be building capacity. And Benson was a piece of that overall plan. And so I'm curious, Superintendent Guerrero, whether you can answer that question.
Yeah.
I was under pressure, and we could move ahead.
I'd be happy to start the response, and I will invite Aurora Terry up to complete the answer. We're not lost at sea here. We are, we do engage in CTE programming across all of our high schools. All of our students, regardless of comprehensive high school, have access to multiple pathways. You saw the extensive matrix of those programs, and they're intended to be fluid over time. They may evolve. I think that's the intention of the plan, that as the industry shifts, as our students' interests shift, that we may make decisions at different high schools to sort of adjust those, those plans. We already have pathways that we host at Benson, and certainly those will be refreshed. But there's an opportunity to enhance that programming. That's been the goal all along as we talk about Benson, and that's going to be a close conversation with the school community around what makes sense and when's the appropriate time with that, for that, and how will that be aligned with any enrollment adjustments that get made along the way. But perhaps Aurora can talk a little further about sort of where we are in the process. But I think what she's going to share is that'll be dynamic, and the master plan and the facility itself sort of leaves open to sort of addition and evolution of CTE programming at that particular campus.
Absolutely. I would say that looking at the 2012 CTE plan that was put in place, it was to expand programming across the district, which we've done. And so our focus now is to focus on the quality of the pathways and improve dual-credit opportunities, improve partnership opportunities, improve the quality of the experience, and the amount of students who have opportunities to engage in those programs. And so that's what we're looking at today, and the teacher quality and training opportunities. And so in a lot of ways, this CTE master plan, we can compare to almost the visioning process in that we're in the stage of planning the phases of the master planning. And so when we talked a few months ago as we start the process, we'll start with a needs assessment, looking at the different programs, the potential partners, and then asset mapping, where is it working well and what does that look like? And so the idea in our process is to have that done by March. So we'd have that initial analysis of what are the needs of different programs and where are the strengths of different programs? And then we would use that information to inform moving forward, what does implementation look like, what may, using input from industry and community, what may new programs look like if we want to open? And I would say that in the current master design, we really looked at that flexibility in the Benson plan for instructional changes to programs. And also, one of the big focuses that we want to do moving forward is to align core coursework with CTE coursework. And so integrating the relevancy of CTE programming into core and working to have interdisciplinary connections between CTE and core. And so almost thinking how freshman success teams look now, so teams of teachers, think of it as teams of teachers across high schools, but infusing CTE teachers into those groups. So there's lots of opportunities for real-world application of the core skills. And so that's also the instructional framework that we're looking at. And that's really, I think, highlighted in the current Benson master plan in the proximity of core classes with CTE programs. So lots of opportunities for that interaction.
If the district plan, if the district recommendation was that we have a skill center, the answer would be probably different, that we would need a full district CTE plan. But the fact that the, that the recommendation is a comprehensive high school means that the Benson CTE planning is happening concurrently with the rest of the high school CTE plannings versus if we had a skill center model, if that were the recommendation, which it's not, correct?
Correct.
It has not been in staff sort of thinking that, that we were constructing a regional skill center. Is it, is it a comprehensive focus option with enhanced CTE programming? And what's, what's, you know, what's marvelous about the plan is that the spaces are adaptable. And so what's exciting is to work with our, our faculty and instructors there to think about how can you take your work that you're currently doing to the next level with, you know, a custom space? So, and that's how the CTE programming and portfolio should look across the district. We should evolve with the changing times in industry and what those partnerships, that certainly there's great opportunity, you know, to model something fantastic there at Benson and build on our overall CTE programming. So hopefully that answers your question. The space is adaptable, and it'll evolve along with our CTE plan that emerges.
It doesn't. It doesn't answer my question, which is how are we determining what programs go into Benson? Are we continuing what's there? Are we going to look at new programs? Is that the Benson community that's going to look at that, or is that district-wide that's going to look at that? Who's, who's making the, flexibility is great, but we have to make a decision by end of March if we're going forward with the Benson plan, specifically which programs are we building in? And we should have a clear rationale as to what those programs are, why this program, why not that program, who are, you know, likely suspects for industry partners in getting capital expenditures subsidized, et cetera. So.
Are there any?
I like what you say about, yeah, we need to look at the quality of all the programs that's going on and how that aligns with industry standards. What can we do for professional development to help our, you know, all those things are crucially important. That's great. But the content, the actual program decisions specific for Benson, we're looking at a really short timeline. I mean, three months is not that long. So I'm, I'm concerned about specifically who makes that decision, how it gets made, who are the stakeholders in that?
I know we're midstream in developing the overall plan, but are there any early indications that we would halt any of the current CTE pathways that currently reside at Benson?
That has not been our approach at this point. The approach that we've been taking is how can we strengthen the current programs? So looking forward with stakeholder input and with additional, I think, industry input and research, once we have those metrics in place, but we're still working through what those metrics look like to systematically determine what we would decide as a strong program or something that we would want to continue supporting and, or not. So we have not done a deep dive into assessing the programs at Benson besides looking at ways to strengthen what is currently there at this point.
Okay, so until we do that deep dive, we do not have a CTE plan. We, we, we have a tweak of what we have now. A CTE plan looks at the big picture and, and looks at what are, what are, what are opportunity costs? I mean, one of Benson's strongest advocates has said, why don't we, you know, we've got all these, what's, what industry are you working in, Julia? That, that, yeah, that sportswear thing, where we're the sportswear capital of North America. You know, I, I mean, there's, what are the other opportunities out there looking ahead? And some of that is already at Benson, some of it may not be at Benson. But a plan would go through that and look at that and have some rationale for what's there and what isn't.
At all of our high schools, right? How does that evolve over time?
I appreciate the, what I think is artificial sense of crisis around this. But the timeline hasn't been short. The timeline's been terribly, terribly long. Staff was kind enough to run off literally 10 years' worth of district committee and community committee reports on where the district should be going and where Benson should be going with career and technical ed. And it's exactly what, at, at the beginning and at the end. It's a, it's exactly what staff is calling for in its recommendation. Comprehensive high school with career and technical ed focus, the majors that we have now. And yes, we do need to be looking at what we can add and what product design we could put in. Lord knows, also looking at what urban design we could be adding. Important state. Looking at all kinds of things. I've got a list. But we can do all of that. We can add anything that we would want to with the design that we're getting.
Further discussion? Further questions? So this is a question just related to the multiple pathways. I think there's been a fair amount of, of board discussion and staff discussion about multiple pathways. And when I look at, we absolutely, this is something that should have been addressed a year ago, but I absolutely think that if you look at the timeline and the work, that we're, we're going to be able to address the multiple pathways programming by the, by the March timeline. And actually, then we have quite a, quite a bit of time just before even construction starts. And I don't know if Superintendent Guerrero or Deputy Superintendent Hertz want to address the issue of whether, whether that, you think we can hit that timeline or whether that's squeezing it tight? Because, so I, what I've heard from board members is an absolute commitment to address the students in the multiple pathway programs.
Correct. And just to be publicly explicit about that, we want to make sure our students have a home for their program. And we've laid out, there are three routes we could take in the draft resolution. One is a dedicated building for multiple pathways. But of course, that has a whole lot of other implications about, is that a new campus? Is that an existing property? And another option, continuing co-location. We know that the campus will be able to hold up to 1,700. It won't be 1,700 students the day it opens. So there'll be some, some timeline there when they could continue to be accommodated, and we could study that further. I think by March, we do need to be realistic about, you know, will we be clear about a recommendation moving forward? We need to do, we need to continue doing a lot of listening to the community and understanding their needs so that the setting is well-suited to, to supporting them. I don't know, Deputy Hertz, if you want to add anything else to the task that we would need to accomplish by March to come back to the board around our suggested path forward, especially if it has implications for the design of the setting.
So as, as the board has seen in the past, we do look at balancing our enrollment on an annual basis at our high school levels. So the Superintendent Guerrero did mention the, we won't open it, 1,700 students. So we believe there'll be multiple years of space available in Benson and before it reaches its full capacity. And so that does give us time and options to consider. We have some undesignated spaces in the Benson project right now that are not specifically designated for program, and by March, we need to decide what we're doing with those programs. So that, that was the three areas that could be arts and music, it could be multiple pathways, it could be CTE programs for future enrollment growth. So there is time to make that decision by March. We just need to make it by March.
But in any case, the current understanding is that in the construction phase, starting in 2021, should we have a bond? That is the understanding that the multiple pathways program would not be at the building?
That decision hasn't been determined. That's part of the process that we're going through with listening.
So that, I mean, that had been the baseline assumption.
What we're doing is gathering additional feedback and from.
And understand it's back in play, but, okay.
Yes.
I think we heard very clearly from our students and community that that central location is very important. And so actually, we're just meeting with our project manager today around, it'll be tight corridors, but it's going to be really important that during the construction phase that they not get relocated unless it's directly in the vicinity.
I could add to that. I met with Alliance today, and they said exactly that, that Benson is the best location for them. So I, yep.
I went on a great tour of Benson with two great kids, kids, excuse me, students who, you know, were very enthusiastic about their education there. You gave me a lot of insights into what was going on there. And they said there had been some talk about Benson students meeting with Alliance students for a listening session, and I urged them to make it happen. So I, I, I hope, hope that happens soon.
We were with their site council yesterday, and we were kind of talking around that issue, but there doesn't appear to be any follow-up that they were aware of. There's no representation of Alliance or multiple pathways on their site council?
Not on their site, not on their site council. So it's a, it's a school, just like Alliance, wouldn't have Benson students or staff on their site council, but I think.
Site.
Well, it's a school site council, which is an entity. I think the, the place where their engagement is needed is in the DAG, which is the campus, really, facility. But on a school site council, it's your, basically the entity that is recognized by the state, is my understanding.
No question there.
In any case, they need.
Needed on the DAG.
They need to create a forum to, for extensive listening.
So they are going to be on the DAG starting in January.
That is correct.
Yeah, I, I think what we're all getting at, it's, it's going to be clearly important for all the school communities to be in conversation. And certainly, I know many of us have been visiting or talking. I know this afternoon, Deputy Hertz and I met with representatives from the DAG and from the school site council as well, certainly encouraged the DAG to incorporate multiple pathways representation. And I know we're going to continue talking with the alternative programs there as well.
Okay, thank you. Further comment, question?
Yeah, a couple of things. Your concern about the cost per square foot and like, why is, why does it keep going up by leaps and bounds? You've expressed that before about other schools as well. The response we've gotten from our folks has been, it's getting more expensive, hard to find, you know, apples-to-apples comparisons. to find, you know, apples-to-apples comparisons, less than satisfying from your end, not very satisfying from our end in terms of getting, getting a clearer explanation. What would you advise us to do in order to get a handle on that, to feel confident of that's where we are in this market, or we, we should be at a different place?
I'll chime in. First of all, it would have been nice to, if the circumstances allowed, for us to have had a briefing of how they arrived at the cost modeling that they used to establish the pricing that they did. Not having that opportunity, we really didn't have enough, a way to kind of validate or challenge whether those were good numbers or not. So I would hope, as a minimum, in our next meeting in January, that we would get a thorough briefing on how they established the model, what's behind that, so we can then be satisfied whether that's a good number or not. We didn't have that opportunity, given the timeframe we've had. So that, that would be my thoughts.
I would very much appreciate your vetting of that. So if staff could provide that for you so that we can hear back from you as to how it shakes out.
Yeah. And I, and I appreciate their, the difficulty in getting comparative information, but I, I still think it's important that we try to pursue it somehow because if at a minimum we owe it to the voters as to why our costs are so high, perhaps compared...
More than, more than double the schools we delivered on the 2012 bond. More than double the cost per square foot.
Yeah.
Ms. Hertz, can that be done in the next two months, at the dialogue with the bond accountability committee?
Yes, well, we, we do work with them at every monthly meeting, and we'll make sure that, excuse me, every quarterly meeting, and we will make sure that we have the materials they're requesting in the January meeting.
I'd like to offer, if I may, I'd like to offer some other observations that I'd like to point out. I think it would be useful, and at least where I came from, is my expectations of my teams was to be able to identify the risks, what their mitigation strategies are, and how that's affecting the level of contingency, or how it's affecting the schedule, whatever that. We haven't had that conversation with, with the team either, and I think that would be useful, not only for us, but also for you, so that you understand what exactly their rationale is, what are the risks we're getting into, and, and what are their plan to mitigate these risks, so that you're, you're, you feel like there's some fiscal control of managing that budget. Or they've thought about the risks, and they have a plan for how to manage that. I think that's imperative going forward on all of your projects, that you look for that kind of information going forward, given what's going on in the, in the market right now. So that would be one recommendation I would have. The other recommendation I would have would be, it's, it would be useful to understand how is this going to work? How is the phasing? How is this bridge? If you have the ability to bridge this in the event the measure doesn't pass, that all needs to be laid out before you proceed beyond design.
That's what's going next.
That's, that's a given, because otherwise you're just kind of heading down a path with no, with no real plan in place. So that would be my, those would be my recommendations for you and, and for the, for the OSM going forward.
Yes. I mean, so Director Bram Edwards, you suggested that if the 2020 bond didn't pass, we could essentially borrow money to bridge. That's a huge monthly payment we're talking about coming out of our general budget, correct?
So there's two things. One, you know, although we can't commit for a future board, generally the assumption is we go out for a bond. The resolution talks about the full faith in credit, and in fact, I think when we voted on Madison and Lincoln, when the question was raised, how can we vote on this because it's going to leave Benson short? We specifically set this board, it's my understanding, said that we were going, that was what we were going to do. It wasn't that we were just going to leave them short. I believe we had Ms. Samuels, Carol Samuels, come and share the different options that we had, and it seemed like the, the board at the time indicated that they felt comfortable moving ahead with Kellogg, Madison, and Lincoln, even though knowing that Benson was last in line and would not have, you know, therefore had the last draw on the funds, that that was the sort of implicit promise from the board. And, and yes, it's, it's not, it's not preferred, but it's also, you, you can't build a school with $80 million.
The board had approved the ed specs level for each of the projects, and once that ed spec level is set, then we are designing the schools to that ed spec level, and that's where the pricing is coming in for that level of ed spec.
Which is not, I mean, yes and, there are a lot of factors that contribute to that, so it's not predetermined that that is the only number, but yes.
I think to your point, what would, what would be useful is to kind of understanding, how much has the budget been affected by the fact that we didn't know what the ed specs were at the time of the bond? How much has the budget been affected by the, the current market we're in? If you can answer those questions, then at least you have a way to, to explain to us and yourselves and the voters, what's driving these cost increases. We're not getting that right now.
Right. And we do know, we can put a number on the rate of escalation that we're experiencing for this type of work in this market at this moment, and so does that make up the whole difference in the escalation even over the last six months? Or is it more than that? It's clearly more than that if the cost per square foot has doubled.
It, it is more than one reason. There's multiple reasons. We haven't broken down the costs by reason, but we can look at that and see if we can make some estimations for you. Okay?
Right, any further questions?
So I just want to sort of keep drilling down on this sort of potential delay, because I'd be really concerned about delay, especially if it moved us into another year again, that would be a 15 to 20 million dollar just potential escalation of the process. So if I understand your, the concerns raised, it's like, okay, how do we address those concerns so that we can keep on track and not have students in a, basically a pretty unsafe building? It's one of the worst in the districts. And then also, we don't have a, a financial penalty for that delay. So if I understand your issues, one is around the financing and some of the line items and understanding it better so that we can, both the bond accountability committee and the community understands that. So that's one thing, and I understand that Deputy Superintendent Hertz is going to engage with you. Then there's the issue about the, sort of the general cost overruns, and we've got the performance audit, so we can't speed, we can't speed that up, but it's in, in process. The CTE plan, I think there's been, as Director Anthony said, a number of years of work on that, and that it can move, it's ready to move ahead. The multiple pathways, I mean, on that piece, it sounds like there is a sort of verbal commitment that we're going to make, solve for that, that it's, we're not going to just kick the can down the road. And then, so if those issues are addressed, and I think then your last point was the, starting the planning for the 2020 bond, and I think you'd have seven board members and lots of staff who would agree with you on that measure, but if all those other things are addressed, pardon?
Eight board members.
Eight board members, excuse me. Would you feel comfortable moving ahead, or like, what, what else isn't, isn't need, is, is not in place?
What kind of those factors?
So if we address, if those are addressed, though?
Those, those, those were the issues that we laid out. Obviously, if they're addressed, we're fine. I think we're a little skeptical that all those can be addressed imminently, but if they can, that's, that would be great.
I would like to point out in response to Mr. Peterson's question, that I think that Carol Samuels and Ms. Hertz have done a very good job of explaining to the board how bridge financing would work. I'm very comfortable with their explanation. I want to emphatically agree with Director Bram Edwards, that I think delay would be a huge mistake. We know that escalation on Benson is going up at more than $10 million a year, and for what it's worth, one prominent local economist recently spent a very long evening explaining that there, to me, that there was no underlying weakness in the local economy, and that there's no sign of softening in the escalation that we're seeing and construction prices. And also, just as a comment, you're proposing fiscal discipline on the second most diverse high school in the state, after Lincoln and Madison went over budget by an average of over $80 million apiece, and Kellogg went over by approximately $15 million, all without calls for delay, because the same factors that apply to Benson also applied to those.
And the BAC has been very consistent in making that point.
With respect, Director Anthony, we recommend it does not be approved.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The board went ahead with those, citing student need and the need for equity, and I think that that's certainly every bit as much true for Benson as it is for the others.
All right, well, thank you. Further questions? Last chance.
I don't have any questions for the bond accountability committee, but are, is now the time that we'd say if we have some things with the resolution that we should flag them?
Yeah.
Because we'd be voting on that next week.
Yes, we're, the goal is to, for the board to vote on the master plan resolution on our December 18th meeting. So thank you both very much, Mr. Spellman and Mr. Peterson, for all of your work on our behalf and behalf of the students.
Okay. Director Bram Edwards.
So just in terms of the, the resolution, while I know it's been written narrowly to primarily address the master plan, the issue of Benson's enrollment and just the interplay with other schools has been sort of an ongoing issue with the community. And I know there's some general language in here, and I might come back with something that's a little bit tighter, that acknowledges that Benson's just different from other schools because it's a, it's a district-wide school versus having a neighborhood catchment area. So that might be something that I may come back with. I would like, this is something, I'm not going to suggest to be put in the resolution, but before I vote on the resolution, I'd like to see is, in writing, what our actual process is this, currently, for making decisions about Benson's enrollment, and also just flagging for the, for the board that, and the superintendent, that when we get to the budget, that if we do have schools that are impacted because of losing, because they, they don't have, they have students who are transferring into Benson, and therefore they have fewer teachers because there are fewer students, the impact that that has in their program. And again, I'm fully in support of, of the Benson rebuild. I just want to make sure that we also look at this holistic, at least, so I'd like to see what the, what our current policy is, because I think it's been rather opaque for quite some time. And then, in, in the budget process, look at how we make sure that we're providing equity and the staffing for schools that might have a fair number of their students decide to attend Benson, that those, the students who are still at that school still get an equitable program. And I think that's fair to, fair to Benson and fair to the schools that have a higher number of students drawn from them.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, and would, would certainly support it. I should just mention that whatever our policies are on Benson admission, every year we seem to have people who are excluded for reasons that are, are never explained. I, I think I can say categorically, every year I'm on the board, I've heard from at least one parent in the Lincoln cluster whose student was denied admission to Benson, and I don't understand that at all. And any increased clarity would be very, very helpful to us.
We will provide that.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I'm, this is my chance. So in addition to those enrollment issues, I want to, based on tonight's discussion, want to relook at the language on the multiple pathways, because I think we have to be crystal clear, because maybe we're not being, because I think there's still questions being raised about sort of the timing. When I look at this, it says that the, there'll be in and out, so the superintendent has expanded the scope of the analysis, thank you Superintendent, to further include other multiple pathways to graduation programs, and will present that analysis to the Board of Education note that later than March 31st, 2019. I thought that's when we're going to be asked to take the next step, so it seems like there's a timing issue there, that we'd need the analysis in advance, so that there's a alignment or, and sequencing versus a collision. So I, I might want to get a little bit crisper on that, because I think that there, for both the Benson community and the, the students in the multiple pathway programs, deserve to have a, a sense of, like, what, what does this mean for all, all the students? And that we will have the opportunity to actually do a thorough analysis and be able to address it by March. So I might have some additional language.
For next week.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, okay. Thank you for the discussion. I think at this point, we're going to take a five-minute recess. It's been a long meeting.
Thank you for the discussion. I think at this point, we're going to take a five-minute recess. It's been a long meeting. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. So five in favor, one abstention. I'm sorry. Can I withdraw my second? I'm withdrawing my second. I didn't understand it was one or the other.
So I'll give the second.
Okay. So let's say that again. Director Anthony moved to vote for Michelle Voe from Corbett, with a second from Director Rosen. Okay. All in favor of Michelle Voe, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. So the motion, the vote passes, five to one for Michelle Voe as, for position 17.
Four to one.
Oh, yeah. I'm not counting. I can't do math tonight. Four to one. Thank you. Moving on to position 19, on the OSBA Board of Directors, do I have a motion to vote for our own Director Anthony?
So moved.
Can't we do a write-in?
Okay. Second. Okay. So.
That was a second.
That was a second for me?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's been moved by Director Rosen, seconded by Director Bailey, for Director Anthony. So all in favor of approving Director Anthony for position 19, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And Student Rep doesn't vote on this. Okay. So we have passed the motion to approve Director Anthony and a vote of five to zero for position 19 to OSBA Board of Directors. Congratulations. Okay. And on the next resolutions, I'm going to ask Director Anthony to provide information on the OSBA resolutions in front of us, please.
Thank you. This comes as some surprise, and I'm unaccustomed to public speaking, but I, the, the OSBA's legislative priorities and policies very closely mirror Portland Public's. I think they're self-explanatory. Clearly, public education in Oregon needs more funding. We need more unencumbered funding. We need to be able to provide the services to our children that we know they need, and the OSBA and Portland Public are pushing for all of that.
Great. Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Okay. So five in favor, one, I'm sorry. And any abstentions? Okay. So we have one abstention, one no vote, and four yes votes. Oh, these are voice votes. Okay. And then our last vote is for OSBA Resolution 2, which amends OSBA bylaws related to composition of the Board of Directors by adding a voting seat for a representative of the Oregon School Board members of the Color Caucus.
Thank you. I will try and speak to this without tearing up. School Board members of color from across the state have been working on this issue for years. They very much feel the need, the obvious need, for a voting voice on the OSBA Board. They have been underrepresented. All of the institutional barriers that keep people of color out of positions of power and authority and policy in the state and across the country are certainly also true for the OSBA. They have put an enormous amount of thought into this. The School Board Members of Color Caucus bylaws are a model for how they should work. I am very happy that we're going to be voting on this, and unfortunately, it does come through in the face of some opposition, and I think it's really important that Portland Public make its voice heard.
Okay. Here's our chance. So all in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Did I not move and second it? Okay. So. And, okay. So the, move by Director Bailey, seconded by Director Brim Edwards on a vote for Michelle Voe. All the, vote?
I'm sorry. Ms. Large? Can I withdraw my second?
Yes.
I'm withdrawing my second.
Okay.
Sorry. I didn't understand it was one or the other.
So I'll give the second.
Okay. So let's say that again. Director Anthony moved to vote for Michelle Voe from Corbett, with a second from Director Rosen. Okay. All in favor of Michelle Voe, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Okay. So the motion, the vote passes, five to one for Michelle Voe as, for position 17.
Four to one.
Oh, yeah. I'm not counting. I can't do math tonight. Four to one. Thank you. Moving on to position 19, on the OSBA Board of Directors, do I have a motion to vote for our own Director Anthony?
So moved.
Can't we do a write-in?
Okay. Second. Okay. So.
That was a second.
That was a second for me?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's been moved by Director Rosen, seconded by Director Bailey, for Director Anthony. So all in favor of approving Director Anthony for position 19, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And Student Rep doesn't vote on this. Yeah. Okay. So we have passed the motion to approve Director Anthony and a vote of five to zero for position 19 to OSBA Board of Directors. Congratulations. Okay. And on the next resolutions, I'm going to ask Director Anthony to provide information on the OSBA resolutions in front of us, please.
Thank you. This comes as some surprise, and I'm unaccustomed to public speaking, but I, the, the OSBA's legislative priorities and policies very closely mirror Portland Public's. I think they're self-explanatory. Clearly, public education in Oregon needs more funding. We need more unencumbered funding. We need to be able to provide the services to our children that we know they need, and the OSBA and Portland Public are pushing for all of that.
Great. Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Okay. So five in favor, one, I'm sorry. And any abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. So we have one abstention, one no vote, and four yes votes. Thank you. Oh, these are voice votes.
No.
Okay. And then our last vote is for OSBA Resolution 2, which amends OSBA bylaws related to composition of the Board of Directors by adding a voting seat for a representative of the Oregon School Board members of the Color Caucus.
Thank you. I will try and speak to this without tearing up. School Board members of color from across the state have been working on this issue for years. They very much feel the need, the obvious need, for a voting voice on the OSBA Board. They have been underrepresented. All of the institutional barriers that keep people of color out of positions of power and authority and policy in the state and across the country are certainly also true for the OSBA. They have put an enormous amount of thought into this. The School Board Members of Color Caucus bylaws are a model for how they should work. I am very happy that we're going to be voting on this, and unfortunately, it does come through in the face of some opposition, and I think it's really important that Portland Public make its voice heard.
Okay. Here's our chance. So all in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Sorry. Did I not move and second it? Okay. So.
So moved.
And, okay. So the, move by Director Bailey, seconded by Director Brim Edwards. So now to a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Okay. The vote passes, six to zero.
Side comment.
Good abstain.
Well, I obviously don't have a vote on the matter, but I think folks heard me recently at OSBA around, seems like a minimal action, considering when you look at the Board of Directors, clearly, there's an underrepresentation, so if this is one way to bring voice to those communities, that's appreciated, but hopefully, over time, the diversity is more reflective of the student demographic in Oregon. But thank you, PPS Board, for your vote on this one.
Having just been with many of our Multnomah County colleagues last night, I can say that we're seeing considerable progress on that front in our other Multnomah County districts, but not our own.
Absolutely. And we need to stay laser-focused on having diverse voices here. So, thank you also from myself for voting for that. All right. Now we're moving to the business agenda. The Board will now vote on the remaining items in its business agenda, already having voted on Resolutions 5771 through 5773. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Second? Okay. Director Bailey moves, and Director Konstante seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment for the business agenda?
No.
Okay. Is there any board discussion on the business agenda?
I would like to make one.
Director Anthony?
Thank you. I'd like to make one very brief comment, since the subject of field trip requests came up earlier in the meeting. I agree with all of the comments the rest of the Board made on that, but I do want to say, an awful lot of our students work extraordinarily hard all year, multiple years, on athletics, on music, on dance, and meeting after meeting, we see long lists of students heading out for wonderful opportunities. And I would just like to say, I'm very, very proud of all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The Board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Okay. The business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero, with Student Representative Paisler voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any committee reports?
Just the Audit Committee, as I mentioned earlier, will meet on the 17th, primarily an organizing committee to prepare the agenda for the year. In addition, the Policy and Governance Committee will meet on the 20th and continue work on some of the policies that are currently sitting in the committee.
Thank you. Student Rep report?
Wake up, Nick.
Sure.
Well, you've been very busy with the, I want to tee you up by thanking you for all of your efforts in the last two weeks convening students on the issue of the SROs. You really listened and hustled.
Thank you. I guess I just have to state for the matter, my night ended when I was sitting here, watching a group of students up on the top floor there, held together, breaking down on a vote. I hope I never have to see that again, sitting here, and I'm saddened by that that got to that point, that got to that point tonight. So I know that the work doesn't end here. I'm going to diligently work with students from across the district in the time coming to meet, to discuss issues on specific matters, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. We do have.
I'm sorry?
I would just like to make one quick comment about last night's meeting of school Board representatives and our area legislators. I would like to say publicly that Superintendent Guerrero did a tremendous job advocating for our district and our teachers, our students, and really K-12 education in Oregon, and I was extremely proud to be part of the district that he represents. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Anthony. Really not necessary, and actually, I want to appreciate the Board showing up strong and PPS representing last night, because I think everybody's contribution helped the dialogue and the education of our local legislators in advocating for the needs of Multnomah schools. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other business?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is just a point of personal privilege. So earlier tonight, in the public comment, there was an allegation that I supported inequitable K8s and the students in sixth through the eighth, sixth to the eighth grade not having equitable experience, and that couldn't be farther than the truth, and it wasn't what I said that day at Bridger. And I, in my zone, we probably have more K8s, where students are in an equitable situation, and it's one of my highest priorities, and I will continue to advocate to put that on the Board meeting's agenda, but the assertion that I maintained that that was okay, because actually, my statement was to the contrary. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you. Okay. And we do have one last item here. So apparently, there has been an issue of parliamentary procedure raised by members of the public regarding the propriety of the motion to reconsider the PPB matter. No objection was raised as to the propriety of the motion by a Board member. So under PPS Policies 1.70.011-P9, that motion to reconsider was properly passed and reconsideration of the PPB motion and the subsequent vote was proper. Nevertheless, in an abundance of caution, I'm going to proceed to make the motion to reconsider now. We will need a second, and then we will vote on the motion to reconsider. If the motion to reconsider passes, we will then proceed to a new motion, second, and vote on the PPB motion. So I move to reconsider the vote. Are there any seconds?
Second.
Second. So the motion, I move to reconsider the vote, and Director Rosen seconded that, to reconsider the motion. Now we will vote on that. All of those in favor of reconsidering the motion, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed, please vote by saying no. Any abstentions? And does Student Representative vote on this? Student Representative?
No.
Okay.
Just to reconsider, and then we'll have the motion itself.
Right. You can vote. Yeah. Okay. So the motion to reconsider passes by a vote of six to zero, with Student Representative Paisler voting no. Now, we will proceed with the new motion to vote on the PPB motion, as was amended earlier.
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. So the motion to vote, it was made by Director Brim Edwards, seconded by Director Anthony. So we will now take a vote. All of those in favor, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? No. No. Any abstentions?
One abstention.
And with Representative Paisler voting?
No.
The motion carries with a vote of five to one, with one abstention.
Four to one.
Four to one. I can't count tonight. It's late.
It's been a long night.
It's the wrong number tonight.
Yeah. Okay. Four to one, with one no vote and one abstention. And Representative Paisler voting no. All right. So I think that's it for the night. The next regular meeting of the Board will be held on December 18th, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.